Good evening, everyone. This is the Gloucester Planning Board. Today is August 13th. This is the first Thursday of the month. This is a regularly scheduled meeting. This will be our only meeting during the month of August as we usually suspend for the second scheduled meeting. We are doing this meeting partially electronically, so I have a right-to-know law meeting checklist that I'm going to go through before we begin tonight's business. For tonight's business, I am, as chair, with the board's permission, going to deal with old business first, then we will deal with action items, then we will deal with new business. As chair of the planning board, due to COVID-19 and in accordance with Governor Sununu's emergency order, this board is authorized to meet electronically. We are also here physically at Town Hall. However, in accordance with the emergency order, I'm confirming that we are providing public access to this meeting by telephone with additional access by video. The telephone line for you to contemporaneously listen or participate if you desire is (603) To the participant code when you dial that is (785) 645 followed by the pound sign. We have given public notice of this meeting as required with both the agenda and the phone number, and if anybody has a problem with that phone number, please call (603) 660-5000, and we will suspend the meeting because if the public is unable to access this meeting, we will suspend it by calling that number. It's a different source, and we will be informed. All votes taken during this meeting will be by roll call; that is a requirement of having an electronic meeting. Anyone wishing to speak from the public when we get to public hearing portions of this meeting, please dial (9), and the operator will recognize you. Of course, if you're present here in the room...
* star* nine.
* star* nine, sorry. It's a big **, not a pound sign. Thank you, Patty. And our operator, Patty, will recognize you, and of course, if you choose to attend in person, we will know when you want to participate. Having said that, I'm going to ask everybody to identify themselves, who's here and first, and then who's on the line. Patty, let's start with you.
Patty Galestaff.
David Pierce, alternate member.
Tim Redmond.
My name is Barbara Griffin.
I'm Gail Lebruck, alternate meeting secretary.
And on the line, Peter.
Yes, Peter George-Anson.
Jim.
Jim Raymond, point of work.
Phil.
Phil, I'm here, and I'm alone.
Kimberly.
Kimberly P. is here.
Did I hit everybody, Patty?
Sarah and Joanne.
Oh, and we also have a couple of other staff members. Sarah.
Sarah Wordy, town engineer.
Joanne.
Joanne Duffy, planning and economic development director.
All right. Thank you, everybody, for identifying yourself. Karen is not going to be here, and I'm going to appoint David to be a voting member tonight since Karen is not here. Gail was voting member last week. I have, as I noticed, would like to change the agenda to address old business first. The old business to be addressed was, in fact, the last business of our last meeting. Pardon me?
Are you doing the correspondence?
Later. I'm going to deal with that. We're dealing with old business, and then we're going to do that.
Okay.
I mail there a couple items, and I want to do them all together. This is a hearing for map five, lot 49-1. There is actually two hearings associated with this lot. The first hearing is the subdivision review hearing for a proposal to subdivide the property into two lots. The property is located on North Mast Road, excuse me, on Mast Road, which is New Hampshire Route 114. The applicant is EZ Express Car Wash, and the property is owned by Varys Financial Corporation. This is zone, commercial-industrial flex zone. This is continued from the July 23rd meeting. This property is undeveloped property across from the Wicked Hair Salon and a car establishment that's been doing a lot of work, and the Auto Place. Joanne, you want to bring us up to date on this, please? And board members, you should have information on this in your chair's agenda, which was emailed to you tonight.
Yes, hi. At the last meeting, there was a discussion about the roadway and whether this new proposed private roadway would be giving this lot, two lots, the parent lot and the new lot, frontage, because this property runs along Mast Road. However, the rail trail does abut this property and is on, exactly on Mast Road, where this property is behind the rail trail. So I did, in the packet on page four, I did include the statute, which is 674-41, erection of buildings on streets, and if a street is shown on a subdivision plat approved by the planning board, that would give the authority to allow someone to build, which is the next application for the car wash itself. The proposal is including a hammerhead, which would provide the required 50 feet of frontage for both parcels. We don't know what the other parcel, what the plans are at this moment. I don't believe there are plans. So that hammerhead may need to be extended, depending on what the use of that property is, but they're just doing that for now in order to provide the required frontage. The application was sound complete, and the three waivers were approved at the last meeting. So basically, the applicant could bring you up to date on what they've done since. There have been no changes to the plan itself, and since the last proposal, we're using the same subdivision plan that was submitted for the last meeting. There are, staff has made recommendations for approval of the two-lot subdivision with conditions which are listed on pages seven and eight.
Thank you, Joanne. Any questions for staff in regards to this application? Tim?
So our...
I mean, members, sorry, not staff. Thank you. Tim?
Our chair's agenda in red shows we have to act on the waivers. Did you say we already acted on them?
We did it for acceptance purposes only. We didn't actually address the finding.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. That's what I meant, that usually that's sufficient, but sometimes you do go back and actually...
Well, if we only waived them for acceptance purposes only, we didn't grant the waivers.
Correct. I'm sorry. I misspoke.
Any other questions or comments from board members on this?
Barbara, I have a comment on the road maintenance agreement. I don't know if you want it now or later.
Why don't you? Because I want to be able to have the applicant address everything in their presentation.
Okay. But back to the road issue, the, Joanne added two conditions, 16 and 17. I don't think they appeared before, and those really respond to the concerns I had last week. But the road maintenance agreement, I know it's probably been reviewed by qualified town councils, but it does not, as presented, have a right for the town to go on and repair, unlike the drainage maintenance agreement, which does. And we don't want to take on responsibility for a private road, but because it's required for emergency access by, or these emergency vehicles, I would think the town would want the right to go on if necessary, because otherwise, our only remedy if the road is not maintained is to revoke site plan approval. So I suggest that we take the sentence that's in the drainage maintenance agreement that gives the town a right to maintain if necessary, and a lien right, and put a similar sentence in this agreement. And this agreement, as presented, if I recall, of road maintenance. Let me just make sure. I can't find it now. So, yeah, it can be amended. If you look at the next to the last paragraph on page two, may be amended by written agreement, but since the maintenance of the road is critical to our approval, I would think any amendment would require planning board approval.
If I can answer that, Jim, I did discuss that with Nick Golan, the engineer for the project, and he did speak with the owner, and they have agreed. I have an email in writing from Nick. The owner did agree to that change in the maintenance, I'm sorry, in the roadway maintenance agreement.
Okay. Thank you.
So, Joanne, do I, this is Barbara, do I understand that then 16 should also include that this agreement shall include the right for the town to repair the road as needed, as we've discussed?
I think I have to do with plowing more.
No, the town would not be repairing anything. It would give, if the agreement were to be changed in any sense, the owners would have to go back to the town, and the town would have to agree to the changes that were being made. The maintenance itself, the responsibility, lies with the future property owners.
All right.
Or current and future.
I need to clarify, because I think that was the first half of Jim's comment.
Barbara, if I may, if you look at the drainage maintenance agreement, it's halfway down the second...
No, I see it. It's on, in the packet that was mailed to us. It's on page 15. I thought your comment was that you thought something similar should be in the road maintenance agreement.
It is. Joanne's correct. On the first instance, yeah, and the owner's responsible for road maintenance. But the question is, do we want to retain the right to go on and provide maintenance and charge him for it if necessary? We do that in the drainage maintenance agreement. I don't know why we wouldn't have a similar provision in the road, private road agreement, maintenance agreement, even though, as Joanne said, we're not assuming that obligation. But I think we do want a remedy. If nothing, they don't do it.
I see at least one question here, but before we do that, Joanne, are you familiar whether we've done that in other private roads in town?
Not that I'm aware of.
Thank you.
Patty may be more familiar.
Patty?
I'm not aware.
Tim?
I don't know.
Okay.
So, Jim, to address your concerns, I think a drainage maintenance agreement has the possibility that if the drainage was to fail, that the town or the state's infrastructure could be damaged or impacted, so therefore, the town was looking for a right, to be reserved the right to go on there and do repairs and charge the owner for it. As far as the road maintenance agreement, I don't see any adverse effect to anything if the road is not plowed. It's a car wash. It's a privately-owned site. If people cannot access the site, or if a fire truck can't access the site, the town should not be putting themselves in a position to keep that road open for those purposes. We have no reason to ask for that because we have no stake in the game at that point, in my opinion.
Let me ask Sarah. You're on the line. Did this issue get discussed at TPW at all?
It has not. The only thing that I'd say we have to be really cautious about is if we put language in there, it needs to be very clear that we have the right, but not the obligation, because we've seen a similar situation where we're reading an easement and we're confused whether now, because it's failing, we have the obligation to do it.
Barbara, I'm not going to push this. People don't want it. That's fine. I...
No, but it's a good point to raise. Thank you.
And Sarah's right. That's the wording that we would have. I answered it, Tim. The fire department and the ambulance and police are still going to try to get in, no matter what the condition of the road is. That's what they do. So I don't want to be without a remedy if for some reason the road isn't maintained. But, you know, they want to pass that risk all entirely on to the landowner. I won't say you're wrong.
All right. Any other questions or comments from board members before we hear from the applicant? I'm not seeing any, so welcome.
Thank you. Let me first introduce myself. My name is Nick Golan. I'm a licensed engineer and senior project manager with TF Ram. As was mentioned in the opening, we were before you at your last planning board meeting. Unfortunately, the hour drew late, and we didn't have enough time in order to act on the application that evening. Prior to departing, though, we did have the opportunity to confirm that outstanding issues, there are no outstanding issues to resolve, so that's why you don't see a revised set of plans before you this evening. Since that meeting, we have had the opportunity to prepare the private maintenance agreements that are being discussed, and the applicant takes no issue with either of the amendments being requested, if that is the planning board's pleasure. I'll be very short with it.
All right. Thank you. And Nick, just so I can move this along, our minutes reflect that last week you addressed the waivers for this. I'm seeing specifically the waiver to section 3C17 relating the topographical map. There was also, there's also a waiver request for 3C23 in regards to a partial waiver also for special features or wetlands. And then, I am not seeing in our minutes Appendix C, section 5D. Yes.
Which was in regards to a drainage component that does have the review and approval at TPW.
All right. And in connection with the waiver request, can you address whether the strict application of these regulations would cause difficulty, and whether or not it will affect the purpose and intent of the development regulations?
Yes is the right answer.
And a yes and a no.
Yes.
A yes and a no.
Yes and a no. That is the way in which the waiver requests have been formed.
Okay. Thank you.
Were you addressing all the waivers, or one waiver, or just a general statement?
That one. He already addressed them in the meeting last week.
I mean, his, the statement that is read into the record, that it will not have an adverse effect on the...
As written.
In his request.
The plan upholds the spirit and intent of the development regulations, and public convenience and welfare will not be adversely affected.
For each, for all three, is that their statement?
All three. That is the accuracy.
You want to, what date is that letter that you...
So the date of Appendix C, section 5D, is dated July 10th of 2020. The other two waivers, which were in regards to the subdivision plan contents, that letter is dated May 14th.
Thank you.
Now, this stuff that we brought with us in our old packet, or stuff we have in our new packet? Does anybody tell me that?
It's also in your packet that's stapled together and numbered. I did put the waivers that each one he requested in there, knowing I would need to do that.
Nine, eleven...
I brought it with me. That's why I'm asking.
They're in there, but I also put it in behind each application.
The May 14th address is two.
Two. There's two together and one.
And July 10th is one.
Yes.
Correct. Page nine of the packet that was, we start on page nine of the packet that was mailed to you every week.
Yeah. What I have here for, same one here.
All right. Does anybody have any questions for the applicant? All right. Seeing none, I'm going to allow the applicant to remain seated at the table at this time. I would like to, oh, did you have anything else that you wanted to say in regards to the subdivision? Tim?
Before you open the public hearing, we do have correspondence from a budding neighbor. Or is that related to the application for the car wash only and not the subdivision?
Joanne, the email?
It's probably related to the whole thing, probably more the car wash.
I think that's really related more to the site plan.
Okay. Thank you, Joanne.
All right. So if it's related to the site plan, let me, I don't, where is it? Why am I...
It was in last week's.
It was in last week.
Why don't I see it?
It was in last week's packet, but I'll show it to you when you're ready.
I don't have it.
It was stapled, and it has this on top.
From Mr. Taver, the abutter.
No, I remember seeing it, but...
But that's to the application for the car wash, not the application for the subdivision.
Well, I thought somebody just said it was more related to the subdivision.
No, it's related more to the car wash.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
You just did it as the whole project.
Okay. So, all right. I am going to then open the public hearing at this time. This is a public hearing in regards to a subdivision request. This is in regards to map five, lot 49-1-1. This is 186 Mast Road. The owner is Varys Financial Corporation, and the applicant is EZ Express Car Wash. This matter was heard at our last meeting of July 23rd and has been continued to tonight. If there's any member of the public here who would like to speak, please dial *9 if you're on the line, and the operator will recognize you, and we'd love to hear from you. Patty, is anybody hearing, hitting *9 on the subdivision request?
So far, not, but I have to scroll, because there's a lot of people on. Nope, not seeing any.
All right. Is there any member of the public here who'd like to comment on this application?
Thank you.
Anybody popping up, Patty?
Nope.
All right. As no one has indicated electronically or here in the room, that they have a comment for this application. I'm going to close the public hearing on this. Joanne, what outstanding issues, if any, do you think there are as it relates to your recommended actions, 1 through 17?
Let me just skim through this quickly. The only, the only thing that's outstanding, but it's really part of the overall permits and things that need to be issued, is, number one, is the DOT permit, the state driveway permit, which we will have in hand prior to the plans being signed. And this, the name of the street needs to go to the select board for approval. I believe it's the select board. And then, everything else is either boilerplate or has to do with the written agreement. And then, everything else is either boilerplate or, or has to do with the written agreement, which we will have that language added to prior to, um, having signatures on those documents.
Is the, the driveway from DOT for this application or for the next one? 'Cause I'm not see-
The driveway would be for this because the roadway is part of this application. You can't subdivide parcels without frontage.
All right. I am questioning then whether you're, you're eight and I, I'm not sure. I'm missing it and I apologize. The driveway condition on this list, private road is thirteen.
Is it?
Right. So, so private road would be the name of the road and, and number eight provide documentation from DOT. We're waiting for that. It's under review.
So you, so you use the term driveway interchangeably with-
Road.
Private road.
Oh, I see what you mean. Um, so, so number eight is the driveway permit for the construction of the private road, which is the driveway permit.
Okay. That's, stop. That's, that was my question. We-
Okay.
Driveways normally mean something else. Okay. Sarah, do you have any comments on the conditions for this subdivision?
Sorry, um, I do not. We are good.
Does your daughter have any comment on this subdivision? It sounds like she's right there.
I'm so sorry.
No, it's fine. It made everybody smile. Okay. Thank you.
Almost.
Almost everybody, Tim. Almost everybody, Tim said. There you go.
One of these days.
That made me smile.
It did. I see it from here.
All right. If, do any board members have any other outstanding issues? And if not, um, I would request that there be a motion in regards to the waivers. I think it could be one motion in regards to, um, meeting the requirements as said forth in the correspondence of July tenth and May, whatever it was.
Fourteenth.
Does anybody wanna make a motion on the waivers if, unless you've got something else to discuss on this?
Make a motion to grant the waivers as requested under the development regulations, appendix C, section five. Another development regulation, three dot C dot seventeen and development regulation three dot C dot twenty-three, based on the, um, statements by the applicant's engineer at the meeting tonight regarding the letters stated May the fourteenth.
All right.
Yeah, I'll second that.
So would that be May fourteenth, July tenth, and also the minutes of July twenty-third?
You can add those dates and I'll amend my motion.
Phil, you okay with an amendment?
That's fine.
All right. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor, I am going to call the roll. Tim?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
I vote yes. Peter?
Yeah.
Jim?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
It carries unanimously. Um, the next action that the board would take, if it's so inclined, is to approve the plan as recommended by staff, which would be with conditions. Um, Jim has suggested, um, an amendment to the road maintenance agreement. The applicant has agreed, I believe sixteen would essentially be changed to provide that the town will be, a, a, a provision of the maintenance agreement will be that the town will be notified if there are any changes to the maintenance agreement.
Is that the drainage maintenance agreement or is that the road maintenance agreement? 'Cause we have two agreements and we're, we're intermingling them a little bit.
I think the town is a party to the, the drainage maintenance agreement already.
Agreement.
Okay. So we're talking about the road maintenance agreement?
Correct.
And Jim requested that we have the, the right, but not the obligation, to go on to maintain the road in the event of an emergency?
Correct.
Okay.
I, I have to say, I think it's a good point, but I am not so inclined to put that in there at this time. I'd rather have DPW ha- be involved in the discussion if we're gonna start doing that on private roads. Um, D, I'm not quite sure, Sarah, what, what action you're referring to in regards to the easement, whether it's drainage or a road, but I think the question that you raised indicates it needs to be sort of flushed out before we just decide to put it in one of our first agreements. I think that if we have the provision that the town has to be notified of any change in the agreement, um-
I don't think it's happened in the pa- past. I think, I think of like a residential, like if you had that in there and no one's maintaining it, and they're kind of like, they come back to the town asking them to come in-
Right.
-'cause they're having an issue between a-
Right. In a residential development.
Yeah. That's what I caution you.
And then we end up with a new town roof. Yeah.
Barbara, I don't, I don't disagree with what you said. If DPW wants to mull it, I'm not gonna tell them what to do.
Okay. All right. So we have seventeen conditions. Number sixteen is modified somewhat. Does anybody on the board wanna make a motion? Tim?
Make a motion to approve the subdivision, the two-lot subdivision plan, map five, lot forty-nine dash one, as presented by the applicant here this evening. With staff's recommendations for the approvals, uh, conditions being number one through number seventeen and number sixteen, is number sixteen been amended?
Right. Been amended as agreed.
With the amendment to number sixteen as stated by the chair.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Phil has seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'm going to call, seeing or hearing none, I'm gonna call for a vote. David?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Peter? Peter? We'll move on. Jim?
Yes.
Oh, was that Peter? All right. Jim?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Thank you. The subdivision has been approved. The next item on our agenda tonight is the same applicant, but it is now in regards to, um, the subdivision request. This is map five, lot forty-nine, one, one. This is a completeness review, site plan review hearing for a proposal to build a three thousand eight hundred and twenty square foot automatic car wash facility that will have manual wash bay and outdoor vacuums in the newly created lot forty-nine dash one dash one. That is one point three two seven acres. The property is located on Mast Road in New Hampshire, route one fourteen. The applicant is Easy Express Car Wash and the property is owned by Vera's Financial Corporation, Zoned Commercial Industrial Flex. This was continued from the July twenty-third, twenty twenty meeting. There is one requested ma- um, waiver and we have not accepted this application. Joanne, is, is this application complete and are there no, any regional impacts?
Yes. It is complete and there are no regional impacts.
And, um, in regards to the waiver request landscaping for parking lot interior, um, do you think it would be appropriate to waive action on the waiver for completeness only so we can address this plan?
Yes. Due to the configuration of the site itself, there's really no place to add, uh, landscaping within the interior of the parking area.
But we're gonna be waiving it for completeness only and address it in the course of our deliberations. Is there any discussion by anyone on, on those actions? Can I have a motion to accept the plan as complete with no regional impacts and proceed in regards to the waivers for completeness only? Is Tim gonna be the only one making a motion here tonight? Got?
Make a motion to accept the plan as complete and ready for review with no regional impact and we'll, we'll grant the waiver for, uh, discussion purposes only.
Is there a second?
Second. I'll second it.
I'm gonna take Peter. I'm gonna make somebody else be in the minutes. All right. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye or nay when I call their name. David?
Aye.
Tim?
Yes.
I vote yes. Peter?
Yeah.
Jim?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
The application is complete. Joanne, you wanna bring us up to date with this, please?
Yes. Um, so I believe that you heard this project for a conceptual, um, once before, but they're planning to do a car wash on this site called Easy Express. There will be a row of vacuum cleaners similar to the ones at the Shell Station, um, with the football arms on them. The site is serviced by public sewer and grassmere water. A special exception was approved by the ZDA to allow for a car wash in this zone, which is, um, commercial industrial flex zone. The proposed hours of operation are Monday to Friday, eight AM to seven PM, Saturday, eight AM to eight PM, and Sunday, eight AM to six PM. This, from my understanding and speaking with the applicant, the vacuum footer, which, um, became an issue at the other, uh, site, is being housed within the building itself. First, for both noise and safety concerns, so, um, Nick can describe that better, but they'll also, this building is also soundproof, so it will definitely help with the noise. They do provide the levels of quite a difficult, um, which I've included a chart so that you can compare what the noise will sound like. And the site itself, a bus, a mixed-use property, which is residential and a small auto repair garage, so there, there are showing a six-foot-high cedar stockade fence for privacy. And all of the lighting is downcast and complies with night, night sky requirements. I've asked if they provide some details on the signage and, uh, have not seen that yet. And there will be a maintenance agreement, again, to discuss between the two parties, once, uh, the other parcel is sold off. The Conservation Commission had a concern with the storage of snow on the filtration basin and they recommended snow be removed to an off-site look. The applicant has worked through most of the issues. There are suggestions by the fire department, as well as DPW, and all of those items have been listed as conditions in the suggested approval. So there are quite a few conditions, but it's just covering everyone's comments that review the plan.
Tim?
Joanne, did you have a, you had a TRC on this project, I assume?
Yes. Several months ago, I, I was looking through some old records and I found that this, this project started many months ago. I think it mi- might have been March or even before that, that we've been working on it.
Did, um, Mike Yorgo from Sewer participate? 'Cause I don't see anything on here about any sewer comments.
Yes. He did participate. This, there, his comments are usually attached in with the DPW comments.
But there are none, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah. He definitely did see this. Sarah could probably, um, add to that. I'm, you, if he didn't, if he had comments, they definitely would have been included.
Sarah, why don't you, uh, if you have a recollection, say what went on with sewer in this? It looks like whatever went on, they were okay with.
Yeah. Mike, um, Mike always reviews the plan, um, before I do, so his comments must have all been addressed. I do see, um, on, on, uh, condition twenty-one, it says, "An industrial wastewater discharge permit application shall be completed by the owner and reviewed by Goffstown DPW Sewer Division and the City of Manchester." So I would assume that that was Mike's comment, not DPW's. Correct.
So in light-
Peter?
On page mark twenty, it says, "C fourteen provide a sewer monument frame and cover detail on plan." I'm sure that must have come from Mike.
Yeah. That was from Mike? That would have been another comment from Mike.
Okay.
Well, I'll wait and I'll ask the engineer a few questions then before I ask any other questions when the time comes.
All right. Anything else from board members before I, um, open this up to the applicant's presentation? I'm seeing no hands. I'm hearing no one speak, so I'm gonna turn it over to the applicant. Welcome.
All right. Thank you. Um, I introduced myself earlier, so I'll forego that. Relative to the application that's before you, um, this actually came up at our last meeting, um, it was continued several times. And in part, we had some design issues to work out, with DPW as well as Joanne. One of the things that I wanna draw your attention to first, um, I'm gonna just go walking through the plan, if I can. We have our site entrance with the hammerhead design that was approved as part of the subdivision. As we make this turn, um, you'll notice this is where the fourteen vacuum stations are located. The original design had them on the opposite side of the site, directly adjacent to our butter. Uh, Joanne aptly pointed out that although we're meeting the, the relative noise ordinance, that perhaps we could look at redesigning the site to relocate those vacuum stations to the opposite side, such that we would now have the car wash between the two. We did have to rework the plan, uh, several times to make that work, but we now have been able to provide that. So the, the cedar fence that was mentioned, um, we'll also have a very nice landscape screen, which I'll touch on momentarily, but as far as the, just the layout properties of the site, um, it's, it's gone on over some significant revisions in order to incorporate staff comments. So we have our, our fourteen vacuum stations, um, your three pay stations so that you can access the automatic car wash. You see two lanes that are associated with a manual wash bay. Our dumpster pickup is located at the southeast corner of the site, very much out of the way. Um, and then we have our parking spaces, um, that abut that property line with the one-way exit and then back out to our subdivision road. Site lights are located strategically for the purposes of emergency access in egress. Uh, the illumination levels are consistent with what is required by town regulation and also, uh, dark sky compliant. Uh, one of the issues, uh, or I should say, one of the design items that we went back and forth on was really stormwater related. Um, we have two filtration basins that have been designed for the site. Uh, they are taking both the runoff from the subdivision as well as from the site itself. So we have one located along the westerly portion of the site, which is accessed with overland stormwater flow to a paved swale, which enters into a four bay on either side before it then overtops into the filtration practice. Um, we do show snow storage within those locations. It is actually the preference of DES to locate snow storage within those pretreatment practices. If you do have any salt or sand or oils or otherwise, you want them trapped in the pretreatment areas versus overflowing into the filtration area. Now, on the original, uh, addition of the plan, we show it both within the pretreatment areas as well as the treatment area. Um, if it's the board's request, we can take it out of those treatment areas. Um, we don't see it necessarily as an issue, but if it's something that we wanna appease that came from, uh, Conservation Commission and if this board expresses that it's concerned, that is something we can do. Before I go further to the gentleman question?
Well, I wanna hear about the second area first and then we'll go to the question.
Okay. So that's really, we also have a stormwater basin on the north side. This is also a filtration basin. Similar design, we're relying on overland stormwater flow. Uh, it's broken into these areas where it'll go down a paved swale, riprap into that four bay before then overtopping into the filtration area. Um, this was actually something we talked about in concert with the subdivision plan. There was a concern that, uh, a discharge from the basin could somehow put the rail trail in peril. Um, we were able to remark that we have designed for up to the hundred-year storm event. Um, and we also had some, some nice correspondence that conveyed that if there was ever an issue, there is the ability to install a cross culvert so that our discharge can then be managed and ultimately discharged to an existing culvert on the other side of the rail trail. to an existing culvert on the other side of the rail trail. So yeah, you'll notice we, no catch basins. Given the site is only 1.3 acres, we've been able to break the grade lines, so small tributary areas that can then enter into these paved swales and into the stormwater basins.
All right. Tim?
So in infiltration basin number two, you show it as snow storage on the print. You've moved all of the vacuum cleaners to that side. How do you propose to get the snow into that infiltration basin with all those units in the way? You can't plow into there.
That's correct, sir. Although that they could displace some snow into those areas, we've looked at our site plan and made sure that we have adequate room elsewhere on the site. When we had the meeting with Conservation Commission, they brought that up as a point relative to where the snow storage would be. So we did go back to the offices and just checked to say, all right, have we covered our basins to make sure that we have adequate room for snow storage? In general, you look for about 20% of your impervious area that you dedicate for the ability to store snow. In this case, that results in about 6,650 some odd square feet. We have adequate area elsewhere within the site.
So show me.
Sure. So the slopes within and adjacent to the basin, both of our four bays located here, here. This one, tough sledging to get to, but I think the reality is that they're going to plow this into this direction. They could also plow in that direction. We have the ability for snow storage along this platform as well as along the rear platform. I'll also note that it is clear on the plans that if there is excess snow storage, that is to be taken off-site. And we do have the benefit currently, we have a second lot next door in which there is the ability for some snow storage.
All right, well, I just don't think you should be legitimately labeling infiltration basin number two as a snow storage, Jerry, because it's impossible to get snow in there.
I think it would be difficult. I don't disagree.
No, I'd like to ask you to remove that note from the plan because it's obsolete.
Okay. Any other questions on drainage? Or snow storage from board members?
So let's-
Moving on?
Let's jump into some other elements that are usually of interest when we're talking about site plans. We mentioned some of the sewer septic and the opening. There is a holding tank system that will be subject to a final permit with both DPW as well as the City of Manchester.
What page do you want, sir? Utility Plan Six, or what do you want?
If you want to look at the utilities, that is going to go ahead and be C6. So when we talk about that, before we jump to the landscaping, let's deal with the technical aspects first. So what are the utilities we're looking at here? Electric, water, sewer. And there is also going to be a propane tank located at the rear of the property. Relative to electric service, we have existing overhead service within Mass Road currently. Unfortunately, all of the poles up there are very busy, so we were unable to site a pole-mounted transformer in that location. So what we're doing is we're going to site a new pole between the two and take an underground service into the property, tying into a pad-mounted transformer that's proposed for this. We'll also leave a stub when we do that work as part of the subdivision for the other lot, so that they can site similarly a transformer there. Water and sewer essentially coming in to the front of the building. As far as the outlet from the wash bays, we do have a series of grit and oil-water separators. One of the comments that Mike Yurgo had was in relationship to the cleanouts. He didn't want to see the typical six-inch diameter type cleanouts. In this case, it's a bit of a larger cleanout. I think it's approximately 14 inches, so it provides some better access. So we thought that made sense, and we've updated our plan accordingly. What we'll do is we'll tie in to the existing sewer main that's running along Mass Road. We've located that tie-in point through the berm of our stormwater management area, such that if there was ever an issue within the stormwater management area itself, we wouldn't have any adverse effects on the sewer line and also provide some additional cover over the sewer line. And before I talk about landscaping, were there specific questions relative to the sewer?
So this is not a recycling water car wash? This is a discharge water car wash?
That is my understanding, sir.
Thank you.
Sarah, do you have any comments on the drainage or the sewer utility issues with this site?
I do not. Eric and myself had a special meeting with Nick to extra go over the drainage, so it has been thoroughly discussed.
Okay, thank you. Does any other board member have questions in regards to the sewer and other utility snow issues?
Yeah, so the manual wash bay, the manual wash bay is bypassing all the grit and separator tanks?
I believe that's an internal feed.
Say that again?
It's an internal feed, so that would be something that would be shown on the plumbing plans, where the overall structure-
Well, doesn't the manual wash bay generate grit and oil the same as an automatic bay would?
To clarify my statement, it is an internal feed to the grit and oil-water separators.
It is shown on the print as coming out the front and going across the front of the print?
Let me evaluate that.
What sheet do you want?
C6.
That service, so from a treatment standpoint, you have various elements. You have the first two grit and oil-water separators sized for that manual, or size, excuse me, for the auto wash bay. Those are of 2,000 and 2,000.
Yeah.
You're correct, I misspoke. I thought it was internal and then it discharged to this. It does loop out in front of the building and then ties into a third oil-water grit separator, which is sized specifically for that use. It's put in series so that it provides an added level of treatment for those other two.
You wouldn't have found it a better idea to run that under the building slab and tie it into your main system?
As I had responded, I thought that was the original design, and I stand corrected. My understanding, this is the preferred methodology.
Thank you.
Any other questions on these issues before we move on to landscaping?
I just have one.
Bill?
Was there any consideration on the capacity? How does, if there's no recycling of the water, how that affects our capacity with Manchester Sewer?
Tim, I'm a-
Well, this, unfortunately for this meeting, I'm a sewer commissioner and so is Dave Pierce, and we discussed these types of things at a meeting recently. And to answer your question, Phil, under our sewer ordinance, these applicants are supposed to come to the sewer commission and request permission to tie into the sewer system before any of this ever happens. Because if there was not adequate capacity, they would know about it prior to investing 50, 60, or $100,000 in a plan. But seeing as Mike Yurgo has reviewed it, we accept his review at the commission level as acceptable at this time. So as far as capacity goes, Phil, I'm guessing that Mike Yurgo looked at those numbers and made a decision on that.
Understood for future reference.
Phil, you got that?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, landscaping.
All right, moving on to the landscaping for this site.
This is a waiver request.
There is a waiver request associated with this, but I think once you see what we're proposing here, it's going to make a lot of sense. Relative to the landscaping that's proposed, these are what we essentially call improved native species. These are faster growers, these are hardier species. Plant species that really-
Bittersweet, poison ivy.
Not those types.
We talked about.
Stay away from them. But what we've tried to do is provide a nice front border landscape. This very much does a nice job queuing up the rail trail, provide some vertical elements with the street trees that break up the sightline relative to the structure. Screening, we understood to be important as well. There is a row of arbivotes that are being provided in addition to the existing mature growth that is there. You can see there are a few trees that were located by our surveyors. So we have a fence, we have some existing trees, and then we also have an arbivote screen provided here. As far as the types of trees, we do see some maples, so they provide that nice pop of color, so that we'll have some yearly color along the facility. And then we have more ground-related type shrubbery that provides that year-round green and is also lower-growing so not to inhibit sightlines for folks as they drive in and around the facility. The waiver that we're requesting is for the interior green related to a parking lot. Now typically, you'd see in a parking lot, a few more than seven parking spaces. So in order to meet the requirements, we would have to have 91 square feet of internal green space. When you see the layout of the property in lieu of trying to provide essentially a break in the parking with a curved island that provides that square footage, we've gone a different route with supplemental plantings that are located throughout the site. And you're also going to see a lot of green space, both for the stormwater management areas as well as the areas adjacent to the parking. So we feel very much we met the intent of the regulation. There is no adverse effect to the public or otherwise relative to granting this waiver, as there's been supplemental landscaping provided in lieu of that 91 square feet of internal green space.
Questions on the landscaping?
And to be specific, that is Appendix F, Section 2.3. B.
All right, lighting.
Site lighting. So again, strategically located site lights, making sure we're providing the appropriate illumination levels for access into and out of the site, while also being sensitive to the fact that although it's a mixed-use project next door, we want to make sure not, we're not unduly lighting their property. So site light poles, which are approximately 20 feet tall. And then, there's really only three of those. Two on one side, one on the other, and the other are just fully mounted lights. Again, all our site lighting is dark sky compliant.
All right. In connection with the lights, are there proposed hours of operation?
There are. The hours of operation, and I believe Joanne may have read them in, and they are located on our site layout plan. Monday through Friday, 8 to 7. Saturday, 8 to 8, and Sunday, 8 to 6 are what are being proposed on the site plans.
Thank you.
Now, there was also a traffic evaluation that was done for this facility. When you look at car washes, it's very much a function of the adjacent roadway. You are pulling your traffic off of that road much so, more so than creating additional trips. What we end up with during the weekday AM and PM is approximately one additional trip every two minutes. During that Saturday, peak hour trip, or peak hour of generation one trip per minute, we have more than adequate capacity in the adjacent roadway or more than adequate capacity in the proposed driveway. So there would be no negative impacts on the adjacent infrastructure, and no off-site mitigation would be proposed. And that is also, was a review item for the DOT. Only other item we typically chat about for site plan is the architecture, so if we want to chat about that?
Sure.
All right. We all want to know what the car wash looks like.
We want to know what color the vacuums are going to be. It's only fair we talk about that on each vacuum application.
Is that a conversation point for a prior project?
Yes, it might be.
See some smiling faces. It sounds like there may have been some significant dialogue.
Is that depiction something we have? Were you submitting? Yeah, here it is over here.
It should be.
I think I got it over here. Thank you.
So when we look at the overall color palette, now this is vertical siding, it's a polymer wall system that would be white. Cement board siding in a mastic silver-gray. Let me try to get all my colors right here. It is a standing ceiling metal roof, which would be blue. And the broken, the building has been broken up. You can see with various window elements, so that way you're not just looking at a uniform face. The lower level is consistent with a split-face CMV block and the Altec trim board, which provides that highlight of orange.
Tim, I don't believe it was submitted with color rendering.
Well, we didn't get one with a roof, that's why I'm looking.
Yeah. That you did not get.
Yeah, I didn't grab that actually from last week's packet. I was just looking.
We don't actually have that in our packet.
But that's in our package.
Which package?
Patty, that's in our package.
No, you don't have the layout of that at all. That's the first time I've seen it.
All right, but it's in the record to know what it's supposed to be.
So the representation we're making this evening is the representation. These are the final, actually, architect-stamped plans. And these were received just recently. We have some nice coupla elements, again, trying to be in keeping with what we see in town. We went over the overall color scheme. I think the rendering provides a nice snapshot of what we're looking at, but this really does show nicely how we've broken up the vertical elements within the building with various components. So that way it'll better tie in with the area that surrounds it.
All right, thank you. Questions from board members on this application to include specifics of the site plan or the waiver request? Tim?
So did we come to a consensus on the bollards for the, for the, we're going to have them installed as they propose on their plan on the rail trail?
Our consensus at the last meeting was to install.
Okay, good, because I didn't remember that we discussed that and came up with an answer. Thank you.
Does the applicant recall that as our consensus?
That was a request to DPW. I did follow up with Sarah afterwards, so the plan will reflect those requests.
Okay. So recommendation number 11 will be lockable bollards to be keyed alike with existing rail trail bollards, period.
Nick, do your plans now show the trail crossing the private road as being a 10-foot-wide trail?
So when we resubmit the final plans, we didn't want to do an interim submittal and try and rush you guys through reviewing it. The revised plans will stipulate that. And I have that correspondence from you that you were able to provide and make sure.
So the final plan will reflect 10-foot-
10-foot-wide trail. And asphalt aprons.
Now, DPW has said they would like to have the concrete with the truncated surface. That is their request.
Thank you, Darryl. Tim?
Have you given any more thought to the discussion we had about the overflow of the front four bay area that possibly could overtop the rail trail? I brought that up at the last meeting when we were talking about the subdivision.
I think we addressed it, but I'm happy to reiterate. So one of the things that we had talked about was, it was something that was evaluated in our conversations with DPW. We've overdesigned that basin such that there's no discharge during a 100-year storm event. Now, if we, we know 100-year storm events happen more often than they used to, it would appear. So we looked at, if it was to discharge, Friends of Rail Trail, Goffstown Rail Trail, were able to convey that they do have the ability to put it across culvert that would tie it into the existing asphalt pipe, which is on the other side of the rail trail.
So that would be installed by the Friends of the Rail Trail or by the applicant?
That would be installed with the Friends of the Rail Trail as part of their rail trail project.
The park department would consider installing it.
That should be more clear.
The nonprofit organization would assist.
So if there's the possibility that it could happen, why wouldn't we insist that the applicant install that as part of the site plan?
It's a lot on the applicant's property.
We could grant you permission.
And I would also state that we have designed beyond the requirements of your site plan regulations.
Okay, I'll wait for it to overtop and then we'll talk about it later.
That doesn't happen also.
Other questions or comments from board members?
Barbara, this is Jim.
Jim?
Yeah, I'm not going to, I agree with Tim on that last point. With the design, our regs are minimums. That doesn't mean we cannot require more if there's particularly a risk that's presented to a public structure. So I don't think it's a limitation on what we can request. But my real comment is on the landscaping waiver. The applicant, in the written waiver, requests a reduction because it's a hardship because the applicant will lose a parking space. It is the nature of a landscaping requirement that it does not allow as extensive or intensive development as the applicant might otherwise want. I don't think that in itself is a grounds for granting a waiver or landscaping that they'll get one less parking space than they might need. I think a fair consideration would be if the applicant is providing additional landscaping elsewhere that compensates for it. But simply that they're going to lose a parking space, to me, doesn't apply.
So if I may, I'll respond to both those comments. And I'll take the first comment relative to drainage, if I may. Relative to the town's requirement, and I believe it's the 25-year storm that we are required to address, we have addressed the 100-year storm, such that there is no discharge from that basin. I agree with you, Jim, that you do have the opportunity to ask for a greater level of review. And that's why it took us so long to get to you. We had to really work through with DPW, and I think Sarah could say to it as well, to make sure that this is the right stormwater management design for this site, to show that you have zero discharge during a 100-year storm where there was a prior discharge. I think as, from an engineering perspective, we've gone above and beyond and that it is appropriate relative to the site. Relative to the belt and suspenders approach, I think what we've been able to show is that if there ever was to be something that needed to be identified as an off-site improvement, that there, appropriate party has already been identified to install it.
that needed to be identified, um, as an off-site improvement, that there, appropriate party has already been identified to install it. Relative to the, the second point, which has to do with the landscaping, maybe I should just clarify my words. In order to provide that 91 square feet, we would have to centrally, we would have to remove a parking space and locate, uh, an aisle within. What we've done in lieu of that, for example, 23 shrubs, uh, shrubs are required for this site. We've provided 54. So in lieu of breaking up seven parking spaces with an intermediate aisle, we thought it would be more appropriate to provide enhanced landscaping in the forms of shrubs and the arborvitie screen that's being provided adjacent to those parking spaces. I'll clarify my, my earlier statement that it's, it's not because we're worried necessarily just about losing a parking space. An added enhancements to the landscaping have been specifically provided to provide that added benefit, such that that component could be waived.
Jim, this is Dave Pierce. Of those 54 plantings, 18 are located on the Butters' property with the permission of the, will be coordinated with, uh, the Park Department. They're immediately, immediately abutting the boundary line, but technically they're on the Park Department's land.
We haven't accounted for those in our calculations.
Right, Tim?
Um, I think the statement that they're, but it's on the Parks Department land, we don't, we're not really worried about screening for the Parks Department and planting, we're more concerned about the neighbors. And I, and I, I agree with your statement that you've planted the arborvities on the fence line for the Tabor's who live next door there, and you are making an effort to, to help with the screening to that side of the parcel, which we could have required over and above whatever the landscaping standard was because of the proximity of your parking to the property line. However, I do agree with your statement that you have provided extra plants. Therefore, your statement in your request for the waiver should have been, had language stated that we have planted more than the standard, therefore, we have, because this is what Jim was getting to. You never actually said that.
So if it would please the board, I would like to amend that application to more clearly state what was vocalized in this evening's meeting, that enhanced landscaping has been provided, uh, in lieu of that interior green space.
Any other questions from board members before I move to the public hearing on this? All right, I'm not seeing, hearing anybody and I'm not seeing anything. Nick, before I, I move on, are there any concerns about drainage from any property outside of the two lots you have been addressing for your clients tonight? Does it cheat, any on or off of your site?
So as part of the drainage evaluation, and again, it was a, it was a long process, uh, we evaluate not only our onsite runoff, but also the offsite runoff, so that we can make sure that our system has been adequately designed to convey those flows that do drain through the property currently.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else with questions? Seeing none, so at this time, I will open the public hearing on this application. This application is from App 5, Lot 49-111. This is a completeness site plan review hearing for a proposal to build a 3,820-square-foot automatic car wash facility, which will have a manual wash bay, outdoor vacuums on a 1.327-acre site on Mast Road on 114. This is Easy Express Car Wash owned by Varys Financial Corporation. Tim, is that a hand or a pen?
When, when you're done.
And this application was continued before I opened, opened the public hearing, Tim?
I want to make sure that the Tabor's, uh, correspondences with the town are entered into the record as part of the public.
Yeah, I'm not really quite sure, we'll deal with that with the public hearing, okay. I've opened the public hearing, Tim has referenced the Tabor's. I've got, I apologize, my packet is not together. I, I did know we had received comments from, uh, the Tabor's who live next door. There is an email that was provided to ZBA members dated April 6th. And I'll ask, like, that go in the record for this application also? Is there another email from them to us? Because I don't have the date of that with me.
No, but this was submitted to us for our considerations.
All right, so I, I, and if the Tabor's are on, maybe they can clarify, because I'm not.
They are not.
They are not, okay.
Is that something as part of the ZBA application?
Yeah, I think, it's act-
I think he used the same letter for both, but I printed one off.
I have this and last, and I just want to make sure both the ZBA letter and the planning board letter, and I, they're probably pretty close to the same. All right, is there any member of the public that would like to comment on this application? I'm not seeing anybody in the room. If you're online and you'd like to speak to this application, dial *9, and the operator will recognize you. Patty, is anybody chiming in on this?
Not yet.
All right, she's scrolling through, because apparently we've got a number of people online tonight.
There, but there's no one for this one. I mean, there is someone online, but there's no one.
No one hitting *9?
No *9s right now.
Nope. All right, I'm not seeing any public comment. Tim?
So the, the, in regards to the zoning letter for the Tabor's?
It's in the record.
Right, but they answered questions in red writing, and the question two about the operations is different answer than what was presented by the applicant tonight, so I just want that to be stated.
What is it in that?
It says here, typical hours will be open seven days a week, 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM, and I received it, unless that's the over and above and bottom and top nine, is that what it is?
The hours that which I stated this evening are the updated hours and are specifically stated on the site plans. If there were general hours provided prior to the application development, then that's likely what they were.
Okay.
The hours tonight are, are.
All right, I just want to make sure then that-
It's on the general site layout, the sheet with all the, it's at the very bottom.
Okay, thank you.
All right, at this time, I'm going to close the public hearing. Joanne, let me ask, Sarah, do you have any outstanding issues that you don't think are addressed by the conditions that have been suggested for approval?
I do not.
Joanne, do you have any issues that you think have, have arisen as a result of our discussion tonight?
Uh, no, the only thing I wanted to just clarify is condition 25 should be amended to reflect the same language of the subdivision plan regarding the private maintenance agreement.
24 or 25?
25.
Try 24. It's on her staff review, she had a blank 20, so on mine, it's, it's one less.
So it is 24.
Yeah, I had a, we talked, Joanne and I talked about the blank 20 to make sure it really was a blank 20. All right. All right, Tim?
So are we going to require as a condition of approval, an ASBILT be submitted to the town? I don't see it in our conditions.
Yes, that definitely should be added.
So with that, Sarah, we, I know we've already approved the subdivision plan with the road. Should, should the, um, the road should have been also required to provide an ASBILT of the road construction for the subdivision, and we can include that as part of this, uh, approval if it-
That would be great.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So we can put that in for number 20 if you want to use it.
It's in there where?
It's not in here.
The subdivision or for the-
So in the subdivision, provide ASBILT, digital data, CAD drawings, the town productization, so CO.
Well, that was in the, um-
That was in the subdivision one.
Okay, well then, fine, I apologize for missing that. But is there one in these conditions for the car wash site?
Provision of digital files, AutoCAD submission on the appropriate datum, et cetera, et cetera. I believe that's supposed to encapsulate that.
And that is where on this list?
That is item number three.
Oh, it's way up, it's usually at the end, thank you.
No, they like to keep us guessing.
Usually those are the last ones that go in. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Does anybody else have any issues? I understand that, um, as part of the, in addition to the comments as listed, uh, comment number 11, the second part of that sentence can come out because we are requiring that the bollards go in. I understand that the reference for snow storage in the second, I don't, Nick, you know what it's called, it's going to be removed?
Also infiltration basin number two.
In the second basin?
Yep, snow storage that's shown, infiltration basin number one will be removed.
It's one, okay, will be removed? And on, on the-
That was number two.
I thought it was number two.
Yeah, you're right, number two.
Okay, and that the, the final plan will indicate that the trail is 10 feet? Um, so those are the changes I have to the listed conditions, I'm seeing, Tim?
So, Nick, you do understand, uh, number 21 about the industrial wastewater discharge permit application?
We do.
You do understand there are accessibility fees that must be paid to the sewer department, as well as a, um, your sewer use charges are going to be calculated on your flow and they'll be charged accordingly.
They're aware of that.
Just want to make sure you knew, because that's, came up on, as an item that seems to be bypassing a little bit.
Okay.
Do any other board members have any issues, comments, concerns on this application?
Barbara, this is Jim.
Jim?
This is a small point, but the, um, there's number 12, during construction, there'll be some, some form of warning. I think we have to be a little more specific, I would say, warning acceptable to the planning director or somebody. Some form of warning could be a postage stamp, um, so make, make these a little-
I, I thought we were going to send Joanne out there, frankly.
Oh, okay, she can put up the sticky pads or whatever, but, um, have, have something that's a little more assertive.
Which one was that?
Number 12.
And then, um, number 17, incorporate DPW's comment. Is that clear, what's being incorporated into the, the approval?
We've already addressed DPW's comments.
I, I understand that, but we're making those a condition, we need to say-
So, Joanne, does that comment need to come out? If they've been in court, Sarah, if your drainage issues have been incorporated, is there any reason for there to be a further condition regarding your drainage, the drainage report?
Um, I think we have one comment regarding a detail, and then general comments that we always include as conditions, but, um, in terms of the drainage, we should be okay.
So I'm not clear, do we need 17 or not?
Just in case Sarah doesn't have it.
Sarah, 17 says incorporate DPW's comments regarding the drainage report, 7/10/20.
In case Sarah doesn't have them in.
Okay, no, I think that has probably all been addressed.
So I don't, so it would appear we, Jim, thank you for pointing that out, because it does make it look like there are outstanding issues, and what I'm hearing from Sarah and the applicant is that they both believe they've all been addressed. So I would-
So we need the recommendation of the DPW engineer to strike that or not strike that at this point?
Sarah, so here's-
It can be, yes, it can be deleted. I am not waiting for any revisions to the drainage report. It is good as submitted.
Okay. All right, we have a waiver request in regards to, uh, Section 2-3A landscaping for parking lot interior. The applicant has addressed that waiver request. Jim, he's, uh, Tim?
I'd like to make a motion if there's no one other discussion.
Any other discussion before Tim makes a motion on it? Seeing none, Tim?
Um, I'd like to make a, a motion to grant the waiver requested from Development Regulation Appendix F, Section 2.3A landscaping for the parking lot, based on the applicant's presentation that they have provided extra plants over and above the required landscaping requirement, and placed them in different locations on the site.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Peter?
Yeah, uh, this Jim, can we, I, I, I don't want it to look like we've granted the waiver request because of the loss of a parking space in that, which is what their written waiver is. Do we need to expressly state that, or do you think Tim's language is sufficient to be the basis for granting the waiver? I don't object to the waiver itself.
Gail, are you going to incorporate in, in the, incorporate in the, the notation that, um, there's, they're providing 54, which is as compared to the 34 shrubs?
Right, and Nick had said that his, he amended, kind of amended verbally his waiver request to state that enhanced landscaping had been provided in lieu of that interior green space.
Exactly. I heard him say that.
Yes.
All right, so I think Tim's comment with that in court, it covers it, Jim. Thank you for making that clear in our record. Are there any other comments or questions on the waiver? Seeing none, I'm going to call for a vote on the landscape waiver request. David?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
The chair votes yes. Peter?
Yeah.
Jim?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Thank you, board members, the waiver request has been granted. The staff is recommending the board approve this plan with conditions. We have a list of conditions in front of us, 1 through 25, with the exception that 11, now is just the first part of the sentence, 17 is being deleted. The revised plan will include a notation of the rail trail as being 10 feet wide, and the snow removal notation in the second drainage basin is going to be removed. Is anybody else aware of any changes, additions, or requirements that we should have in connection with the staff recommended conditions?
What was the change to number 12?
Barbara, did you add the ASBILTS to that list? I lost track.
Um, I think we determined the ASBILTS were three, but Gail points out that we need to, um, change some form of warning to-
For rail trail users?
Warning signage?
Warning consistent with industry standards?
Warning, Nick is proposing warning consistent with industry standards. Since, given the site, I'm, I'm not really sure what the warnings would need to be. That would, would seem to be acceptable to me, I will go to David for this one.
I have a, uh-
I see her here.
I have a well-constructed warning sign that we've used on previous projects, uh, warning trail users about rough surface, dismounting if necessary, and halting if the, if the construction crew tells the bicycle user to do so.
So in-
And I will, I'll send an image of that to Nick.
Okay. Industry standards and David's sign. Tim?
Industry standard.
While I, while I agree with Nick's representation of number threes with the word AutoCAD submission in North American datum, I don't even know what any of that means. So I would like to include in plain English that we have a, an ASBILT drawing of the site submitted in addition to number three, or in addition, added to number three.
So why don't we just change number three and add on to include ASBILTS?
That'd be, that'd be fine, when the, when the project is completed.
Clarifies that it may be, Patty and Joanne, you can change that to be the standard language in the future, so that us laypeople understand what the engineers understand. Is there any other discussion on this plan or the conditions that we're discussing?
Motion?
Tim, motion, Tim has indicated he's going to make a motion.
If there's no more discussion, I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the site plan with the following condition recommended by staff, number 1 through 16, eliminate 17, 18 and 19, eliminate 20 because it's blank, and 21 through 26, with the appropriate amendments to those conditions as were stated by the chair earlier in this meeting.
Along with the snow notation, snow removal.
All the ones that we had reiterated.
All the ones that you had spoken, and the changes to the number 12, but they were all discussed and recorded.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Peter, seconds. Is there any further discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'm going to call for the roll. David?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
The chair votes yes. Peter?
Yeah.
Jim?
Yes.
Phil? Phil? He's not present. Kimberly?
Yes.
Go back to Phil.
The motion, Phil? The motion passes. Thanks, Mary. All right, thank you. All right, the next matter that we're addressing- All right, the next matter that we're addressing tonight, I said we were going to go back to action items, which normally we deal with first in this matter. The first action item that we're taking up now is our usual action item, which would be to address the minutes of our previous meeting, which would be July 23rd. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a correction.
Tim.
Page 19 of the minutes. The middle of the page, there's a paragraph that begins with my name. And I, it states that Tim Redmond said we've been burned on private roads in the past. I said that. And we don't accept them anymore. That is not true. I would not have said that because we do accept private roads. So I'd like to have "we don't accept them anymore" stricken from the record.
Did he say that?
I'd have to check the video.
Okay.
If you want to check it and come back to me, I can, we can hold off, we can hold off on the minutes. But I, I don't believe I would have said that because I know we accept private roads. I might have said, "I don't want private roads." Because I don't want private roads.
I have no comment on what was said without the video in front of me.
All right, so Tim has asked to amend that. I'm going to assume his recollection is right. Any other changes to the minutes? I'm not seeing any hands raised, I'm not hearing anybody on the phone. So I'm going to call for a roll.
You didn't get a motion.
I didn't get a motion yet, I just.
Motion to approve with changes.
Sir, a second.
Second.
David seconds, is there any further discussion? Now I will call for the roll. David.
Yes.
Tim.
Yes.
The chair votes yes. Peter.
Yes.
Jim. Phil.
Abstain.
Kimberly.
Change. Yes.
The motion passes, Jim was not voting. All right, the next item on this is a recommendation requested to be forwarded to the select board for land acquisition for conservation open space, map 8, lot 13B off Stinson Road. I understand that David Nieman is on the line.
Yes.
In regards to this request, and you should have a two-page insert in your packet, board members. David, are you with us? Star nine.
He's, he's not muted anymore.
Oh, you're not muted, I understand, so welcome.
Thank you very much. So hopefully the insert is pretty self-explanatory. A couple of years ago, the Conservation Commission and Select Board, we purchased.
David, excuse, David, excuse me for a minute. Are you on a cell phone?
Yes, I am.
Is there a part of your house that gets better reception? You're pretty garbled.
Let me try stepping outside.
I have to move in my house, that's why I knew, knew to ask. Did we lose him?
No, not him. Somebody.
Not him.
Not him.
Is it any better now?
Nope.
No, we'll try to deal with it. You, you gave a very complete packet information, so maybe give a brief summary and we can ask board members for questions.
Well, the, one of the main points to make is we acquired other properties around the marsh. Our goal is to open to a public access area for people to enjoy. We weren't able to secure this particular property two years ago when we got the others. But when you look at the map, you can see the vital role it plays in connecting the properties. About two-thirds of the land we acquired is south of the marsh. And we have no dry overland path to get to that. We can't go in the other direction because of the stream at the output of the marsh would require a very large bridge, which we're not about to construct. So this really, in addition to protecting the rest of the marsh, which is wonderful, it also will now enable us to put in a trail system that goes all the way around to the other portions of the properties. And so that, that'll make a big difference. We did start the beginning of some trail work and mapping out where the parking lot would be in February, but after the COVID-19 came around, we haven't had any public gatherings to continue with that. Hope to pick that up again this fall as, after we finish this acquisition.
Tim.
David, how does the use of $50,000 from the land use change fund get affected by this withdrawal?
Well, we, we still have considerably more in it. I mean, we just got an extra donation into the fund last month of $44,000. So it's only taken us down about $6,000 relative to where we were.
But there's still, there'll still be a fund balance left? You're not going to wipe the fund out?
No, it's not going to wipe the fund out because we have a couple of other projects that are in the works.
David, could you tell me, there are labels on the lots around this. PLC, Conservation Commission, PLC. What is the, the ownership status of the lot that appears just directly on my map below 1813B?
Well, lot 1813B is privately owned, so we're purchasing it as part of the town. And it will be added to the land that was the previous standpoint subdivision, which is now owned by the town.
Right, I understand that, but on the labeling, David, it looks like there's a lot that abuts the one you're proposing to purchase, that is not owned by the PLC or the Conservation Commission.
Oh, that's, that's also PLC, David. The PLC, it comes down and there's a second lot associated with that easement.
So the, the boundary of 813B, other than the private homes off of Stinson, will all be PLC or conservation?
That's correct.
Okay, Tim.
So David, the, the, Eleanor Porter's property that was, when you bought the, when they bought the development rights, that is being managed by the PLC, correct? They do not own that, do they?
That's correct. They manage it, they hold the conservation easement on it. So any trail that we put in will only be going through the town-owned properties, not through the PLC property.
So I just want to make it clear that some of those ones that are labeled PLC are town-owned parcels that are managed by PLC stewardship. They are not owned by the PLC.
Right, well, we sort of changed that.
That's correct. And that's also true on the other side of the marsh, right along the road, the Jennings easement.
Right.
Still owned by the Jennings, but managed, the easement is managed by PLC.
Thank you, David.
Other questions or comments from board members? David, do you have anything else? Jim.
And we recommend the acquisition of this property.
Is there a second?
As David said.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by Jim, seconded by Tim. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'm going to call the roll for a vote. David.
Yes.
Tim.
Yes.
The chair votes yes. Peter.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Phil.
Yes.
Kimberly.
Yes.
Thank you, David.
Thank you very much for your time, and everyone have a good evening.
Actually, David, I would like you to stay and listen to the discussion on this next one. Are you still on?
Okay.
Thanks.
Yeah, still on.
Okay.
Fortunately, the audio is better on my side than what you hear from me. You're all coming in clear.
All right, I just want, I just want you to listen in. All right, so the next one is a recommendation that's being requested to forward to the Select Board in regards to building on a Class 6 road, map 42, lot 13, located on 39 Incline Ave. And is somebody here for this?
He's, he's on the phone. Mr. Skursy's on the phone.
Okay. And Joanne, you updated us today with some information and our packet has some information. So why don't you tell us what's going on with this?
Okay. So the applicant owns property on Incline Ave that was a camp. And at some point, and he purchased this property in 2000, I believe it was 2019, about, maybe about a year ago. And he started doing some work on the siding, installed windows, he put in some insulation. He added a well, there was no water or septic on the site. Since that time, he has received approval from New Hampshire DES to install a septic system. He does need recommendation from the Select Board to build on a Class 6 road because he's converting a camp to a full, you know, full-time structure, you know, full-time house, whatever you want to call it, full-time structure. And so that is why he is before you tonight. Mark's not sure about what's been done on the interior of the property because he hasn't been inside. There has been some site work done on the outside and some trees removed. I did check with Eric from DPW and he will have to up, update driveway permit, which that has not been done yet.
Any questions for, for board members on this?
Oh, if I could just say one more thing.
Sure.
As part of this overall project, we did go to the ZBA to add on a mechanical room and a porch. And the ZBA did approve that. So now it's, you know, the only thing left is your recommendations or comments, if you have any, and approval by the Select Board.
Patty, did we get a, do we have a printout here in front of us of the email that Joanne sent this afternoon?
Yes, it's all, I distributed it, you all, you all had it in front of you. I can give you another one.
You need one, I got spare.
I don't know why, I'm having the hardest time keeping track of my paperwork today. Oh, I got it, I got it, I got it. This is what I've got. Yep, okay.
All right. All right. Any comments or questions from board members before we hear from Mr. Skursy, I think is how you pronounce it?
Yep.
Yeah, I have a question.
Phil.
In the email that we got today, it mentions the Tanya LaChance property as being, I don't have it in front of me, but by recollection, .29 acre. And then it mentions this piece of property as being a half acre. And I didn't see in there what the relevance of the Tanya LaChance property being .29 and this property being a half acre. I, I don't know if there was a consolidation. It's two lots, it mentioned the four lots from the 1905 map or layout from the Incline Railway. But I don't, I don't, I didn't understand the connection.
And that's what you're referring to, Phil, about the two point something acres?
No, .29.
But where are you seeing that?
Well, it's in the email that you sent. You mentioned the Tanya LaChance. On the record, it was, there was no taxation on it because of it being deemed a non-buildable lot. It was the size of the lot.
So the, the assessing records showed back in 1999 that the lot was unbuildable and at that time it was owned by a Tanya LaChance. In the 1905 plan for this whole area, this property consisted of four lots that were pieced together, 39, 40, 47, and 48. But there's nothing here about two acres, it just says.
No, not two acres, a point. I, I.
I don't see it in the email, Phil. What email are you referring to?
Right here at the top.
Is a ha, is point, is a half acre, it says.
Okay.
How did it, how did the Chance property, that's less than that, and this now being half, how did, how did it, how did it grow?
But there's no, there's no property size noted for the LaChance property in the email. It doesn't say. It just says.
This property is, is like around 22,000 square feet, give or take. It's a 150 by 150 lot.
I was just going to do it.
I don't know what you're referring to. There's nothing on here that says you think.
I, I'm not going to get hung up on it because it's, my guess is, is it's off the book and page reference of 150 by 150. The plan that Meridian has provided shows that it's 150 by 150. So I don't know what the 22, because it's, it's the lands, it's the Land Services have identified the lot as being half an acre. So.
I think the math is wrong and I think Phil's right, because if it's 22,000 square feet, a lot, one acre lot, I believe is 44,000 square feet.
Well, Barbara, if you call, it's every beginning, okay? It says, David, 39 Incline Avenue, map 42, lot 13, correspondence item. Purchased property on 8519 for $38,000. Book 9195, page 2553. Size of lot is .29 acre.
That's what the assessment.
Okay, how many, how many square feet are in an acre?
I think 44,000.
43,560.
There you go.
Thank you.
So 40.
560.
So in fact, 150 by 150 is approximately a half an acre.
22.5.
So I don't know why the, the email says .29.
Assessing has it, no.
That is what the assessing records show.
Okay.
I took that from the assessing records. It doesn't mean it's correct, but that's what it shows. The plan itself shows the lot as being 150 by 150, which is grandfathered non-conforming because the agricultural requires two acres.
Okay.
Okay, is this point, is this acreage that you're talking about, is it, is it an actual survey? To determine the size of the lot? Or what, how are we determining the size of the lot? I, I don't know which number to, to, you know, go by.
There's a plan in your packet that was done for Mr. Skursy from Meridian Land Services, which shows the lot as 150 by 150.
And he has stamped it, so I would go by.
I also saw a comment on there about the size or the dimensions.
No, this plan is not a boundary survey. This lots lines, according to the note, are based entirely on the reference plan. There was no onsite boundary checking.
Right. So, well, that's my point. I have no clue of what the actual size of the lot is.
The ZBA required a surveyed plan before they issued the variance to the setback for the additions that Mr. Skursy is, is requesting.
Well, they didn't get that, so let's just stop right there.
And he certified it. He says, "I hereby certify the existing improvements shown or on results of a field survey."
That's right, this, the only purpose of this plan was to show the improvements on the lot. This is not a boundary, this is, this is. This was taken off the, probably one of the, the original plans off the old.
Read the next paragraph under certifications. As a result of a field survey.
Right, but it's, okay, so we did go out, but it's the improvements, not the lot.
But the lot size is part of a field survey.
No, assessing is just for tax purposes. They'll change, if they get a survey, they will change it.
He's got the pins noted, I guess he doesn't, he does note the corners. All right, so we're not going to, this is, I understand, Phil, the .29 reference does not make any sense. We have a plan that purports to show this is a half acre lot. That's what we're going with. I don't have any reason to think that the plan as submitted is incorrect. It may not be entirely accurate, but it would certainly seem that it is .5 acres plus or minus because technically 150 times 150 is actually .512 something, I think, for acreage. So we have what we have. So does the board have any other questions before we hear from the applicant? All right. Is the applicant here? Press star nine. Is the applicant here, press star nine.
He's not mute, he's unmuted.
You're unmuted, welcome.
Hello.
Hi.
How are you doing?
Is this Mr. Skersky?
Yes, my father is also, uh, in conference with us.
Okay, so, so could you just tell us your full name?
My name is David Skersky.
And, and who are you with?
Mark Skersky.
Okay, great. And who's the owner of the property?
I am.
That's David, David, right. It's, it's harder to do this when you're not in front, to remember, okay? Um, so what would you like to tell us about this request?
Um, I went, um, just trying to go through the steps, um, uh, and, you know, give you guys everything you need in order to get a building permit to continue developing the structure that was already existing. Um, I'm adding, I'm requesting, um, a permit to continue building on the property and put an addition on to the back for a mechanical room, uh, to put in a fire suppression system, um, and to put a porch on to the existing structure.
Okay, anybody have any questions? Thank you. Board members, any questions or comments? I do, and I asked David to stay to listen to this in particular. This used to be an area in town that the Planning Board and the Conservation Commission paid close attention to because of the issues with the lots in that area of town, the drainage issues, the Mountain Base Pond, which had been put in, the, which feeds the water precinct, um, and the fact that accessing these lots from an emergency standpoint was, is next to impossible. And, nothing has changed. Accessing some of these lots is incredibly difficult, the drainage is terrible, um, and in regards to this particular lot, I'm, I'm gonna, Mr. Skersky, I'm gonna be quite frank, um, you did an incredible amount of work on this property without any permits. You bought an abandoned cottage. Um, from a tax standpoint and the purchase price, you would have had to have known, any reasonable person would have realized what they were buying, which was an unoccupable building with no access. And there has been an incredible amount of work done on this property. Um, and probably, and it's back one street from Mountain Base, I'm not quite sure how it came to anybody's attention, but I'm concerned, cause conservation appears to be completely, um, you know, it's not, I don't think, really paying attention to what's going on up in this part of the mountain. I note that the town owns the lot next to this lot, which, um, I don't know whether the town was aware that this lot was for sale at one point, but it certainly would have made something contiguous. The, the staff report shows that there are issues of septic systems on other lots in this area, whether they're there or not. Um, and, you know, if we look at the surveyed plan, there has been a gravel drive put in, there are huge retaining walls that have been put in on this site, there are felled trees that are over a foot in diameter, sitting on the lot. Um, and I, I, you know, I just, I, I had, I've, I've sat on the Board of Selectmen, I, on the Board of Selectmen, I can tell you I was not in favor of these sites that were really postage-sized camp sites that have been slowly converted. Um, and I am, I would have a very, um, hard time supporting, recommending to the Board of Selectmen that this be granted. So, I just wanted to say that, um, I wanted David to stay on. Um, I, I noticed that there's a, a plan, you know, that was in our packet that referenced the LaChance two-bedroom home, which has been razed, um, and the cottage clearly identified as abandoned. So, I, I don't know what we're doing.
Well, also, Barbara, my, my point with this also is that, uh, this was deemed an unbuildable lot, and the taxation was based on it being an unbuildable lot.
But it was, as Joanne points out in her notation, it was grandfathered, I'm not saying that it, you know, these lots existed.
Oh, yeah, well, because they were, they were, they were created by the Incline Railway.
Right, right. So, so, um, anyways. Other board members, comments?
Barbara, this is Jim, I, I have some familiarity through Franklin Jane's involvement in the Conservation Commission. I share your concerns, this is typical of a camp that evolves usually without our knowing it into a full-time house, and just amplifies the problem in an area of town that has been a problem for years, and I, I personally don't recommend that we permit, um, this development.
I understand the Board of Selectmen have different issues, but from a Planning Board perspective, I have a really hard time with this. Tim?
In our packet, we have a, a document that says the home camp has been razed, that means it's been torn down. My question is, was it in fact torn down, or was it, is that an incorrect statement? I may let the owner speak to that.
Um, I can answer.
Joanne, go ahead.
Ooh, I'm getting feedback here. The house that was razed was actually on lot fourteen, forty-two fourteen, not forty-two thirteen.
Thank you. Cause it's li, I don't know how it all happens here.
That's part of the issue up there, is it's just, but the avenue is, is Incline Avenue, if you can see that, right below.
I see it in between, separates the two property.
Yeah, so that's the, the street, so to speak, um, where you see the, the, the lines, it's really where, at the end of Avenue, there's some gravel there, but up to where the gravel, but when you get to where those, whatever those pipes are, whatever they're trying to show there, um, it's pretty much nothing as far as a road base at, at that point.
One of the, one of the concerns that I have is, as was pointed out, the, these were all camps, they were seasonal camps, um, these are, are Class 6 roads, some points they're, they're impassable, uh, it's happened in the past where we couldn't get a fire truck to a house that burnt down. Um, and i- if you allow these, these camps to become, uh, twenty-four, uh, uh, full-time season, uh, full-time homes, uh, you know, if, you just call, you're just leaving, uh, creating could, uh, safety issues for people on these roads.
May I be allowed to speak?
Sure. Go ahead.
Um, we've, uh, I've lived up on the mountain for, uh, over thirty years.
Yep.
And, uh, my family's been taking care of the roads, maintaining the neighborhood. Um, we've, uh, the Skersky family has worked with the neighborhood to repave and, uh, fix the roads. Um, so, we, we're, I mean, the house that, at thirty-nine Incline, which we're speaking of, is on the other end. Um, we've been trying to widen that road, fix the road, as the town said that it would be my responsibility to maintain. Um, we've upgraded the road, fixed drainage, which seems to be an issue for, uh, concern for you guys, um, to properly, you know, fix what was already there. Um, so, the road actually has a twenty-two ton, uh, capacity, uh, for a well truck, a well rig that came up, um, for the property, which is actually twice what, uh, fire trucks are rated for, that Goffstown owns. Um, the wi, road was widened, so if a well rig could get in there, a fire truck can get in there as well. Um, we're continually trying to fix the neigh, develop the neighborhood, and if the neighborhood develops, um, Goffstown, um, uh, just develop and raise, um, for that.
Mr. Skersky, we're just having a hard time hearing you, okay? So, can you speak up? There's, who's got some feedback going on? Can everybody, can other board members, like mute maybe, if you can?
Yeah, I'm having difficulty hearing too.
All right, Mr. Skersky, I'm sorry to cut you off, if you can go again.
Okay, I don't know where I.
Well, you were talking about, um, the upgrades, the improvements that your family is doing, and you had talked about the road improvements and that, uh, an oil rig could get on it. I mean, a water, a well rig.
Truck can get in, a fire truck can also.
Yeah, um, uh, the road has been increased with the, the gravel, um, as for the, the driveway, um, we, and the stonework, that was exposed, that was on the property, we added to it, um, but we added the gravel in order to support the weight of the vehicles, where the, these heavy, uh, vehicles coming in. Um, they're twice the tonnage that, uh, the Goffstown Fire Department had for their fire trucks, um, and they're just as long, if not longer. So, if they can get in there, then Emergency Services can get to my camp.
Mr. Skersky, did anybody in town see any plans or approve any work, or know what work was going on before or after it was done?
No, nobody has asked for it, they, I signed, I was, uh, signed a waiver that said that, um, we were responsible for taking care and maintaining the road, um, and that's what we, I mean, we've been doing it without signing the waiver, but we've been doing it for thirty years.
Right, from another location.
This is, can I just introduce a point of information really quick?
Sure, Sarah.
Um, you're supposed to request permission from the Board of Selectmen before improving a Class 6 road. Um, I know, like, that it seems like a good, good thing you're doing, but, um, the reason we had you sign the waiver back in February, March, is because that work was never supposed to be done without the Board of Selectmen's permission to upgrade the road. D P W is supposed to be a part of the planning to improvements to a Class 6 road.
I didn't see anything that stated that, um, wordage, um, on the documents that they wanted me to sign.
Okay. Thank you, Sarah, for the update on that. All right. Any other board members?
Can I have a question, Barbara?
Peter.
He keeps referencing to this building as a camp. Now, is this gonna be a re, uh, year-round residence now, or is it gonna be a, a camp?
It's capable of being a year-round residence with the septic system and the well.
The question is, what's it going to be? What are the intentions? A year-round residence or as a camp?
It was originally going to be a camp, but because I was told that I had to upgrade the septic system, um, it's now capable of being a year-round residence.
I, I.
Wordsmithing.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from board members? All right, this matter, it's, thank you, Mr. Skersky, is there anything else you'd like to tell us?
Um, no, I mean, I, we, I, I've lived up there most of my life, and we, we try to help and, and develop the, the neighborhood and keep it clean, um, maintain the roads, help the neighbors. Um, I wanna do good for Goffstown and, and help Goffstown out. Um, I know this area was an issue, but putting in a fire suppression system and, and keeping the roads clear, um, that's adding to the safety and the concern that Goffstown, um, just kinda easing that down. Um, I'm gonna continue that with living up there, and more so. We have the equipment to, to do that, um, and I'm willing a hundred percent to work with the town in all aspects, um, going forward.
So, Mr. Skersky, you live up there?
I live up there.
You already live up there?
No, I, I grew up there, my father lives.
Oh, okay, all right.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, and you want?
My, my uncle.
Okay, and just so you understand, regardless of what this board may do, this request goes to the Board of Selectmen, and, and you would need to go there for the approval regardless, right?
Oh, yeah, I'm just going through the process.
Okay.
Yep.
He, he knows that you're making a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen.
Okay, and that they have the final decision.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Um, any further discussion from board members on this matter? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion not to recommend.
Is there a second?
I'll second it, Mr. Jim.
The motion before the board is to not recommend the issuance of a permit on a Class 6 road. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'm gonna call the roll. David, so a, a yes is a not.
Explanation vote.
Okay, David.
Yeah.
No, David, I'm sorry, David Pierce, we're taking a vote, sorry, Mr. Skersky.
I vote yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you. David Pierce.
I concur with the motion.
Yes. Tim?
I do not concur with the motion.
No, I vote yes. Peter?
I'm gonna abstain because I'll be hearing this at a later stage.
Jim?
Yeah.
Phil?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yeah.
So, what was the thing, five to one?
So, the motion carries, the vote was five, one, one. Thank you very much, Mr. Skersky, so that will be, Peter Georgianis is a Planning Board member, you heard him abstain, he is a member of the Board of Selectmen, so you're, this matter will be placed, um, on probably the next Board of Selectmen agenda, I'm not sure, staff will be able to tell you when.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you all for services and your time.
Thank you.
I do wanna note that when this went to Z B A, Conservation Commission did receive a better notification, and they did review it at their last meeting.
That may be.
Just noting that for the.
I, I asked David to stay. Thank you, David, for staying if you did.
They looked at the better notification, they didn't get into too much discussion, they just.
Right, okay. All right, so I think that is it for our action items, which means we can go back to new business, which is map three, lot sixteen, relief, request for relief from the outer fifty of the hundred-foot wetland surface water conservation district buffer to erect a pool with an attached deck that will be attached to the existing house, and is located within that outer eighty-foot wetland surface conservation district bu- buffer. The property is owned by Joan and Allison.
John.
Deceverie, thank you very much, John and Allison.
David for this one, too?
Oh, David, no, thank you, if you're still on, Patty, let me know you're still on. Thank you for staying for that last discussion.
Yeah, I'm going through minutes with Conservation Commission, cause I don't remember ever hearing about this before, and I'm not finding it in the minutes.
It was under, um, the correspondence. It was a correspondence item, and it was, Evelyn quickly reviewed it, and you guys kinda questioned the location of it.
All right, thank you.
And Jean commented that there were butters to it.
All right, and there, this application that the Planning Board has now, before it, is at eighteen Winding Brook Road, um, the property is zoned agricultural, and it's within the Wetland Surface Water Conservation District overlay. Um, we have the information in, um, that has been provided to us. Uh, Joanne, is this, uh, does this matter have, um, is this like an applica, I always am never sure what to do with this, this is an application, so has everything been submitted that we need for the, this application? Joanne?
Yes, they have submitted everything. Um, the main thing that you'll wanna look at is the wetland evaluation report, which was submitted by Eric Mitchell.
And there, and is there any regional impact?
I don't think, do we worry about impact?
No, there's.
Well, she's, I, I, we're always a little fuzzy as to exactly what to do with this, so it's easier to treat it like everything else.
It's still an application.
It's still an application. All right, so.
Make a motion on that?
Yeah, please.
Make a motion, do we find the application is complete and ready for review, and there is no regional impact?
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll second.
I'm gonna give that to Phil, you took over seconds for a while. All right, it's been moved and seconded, unless there's some comment, I'm gonna call for the roll.
Are they asking for any waivers?
No. And I've lost the back sheet with my attendance. David?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
The chair votes yes. Bottom up, Kimberly.
Yeah.
Now, Pete, all right, Pete, Peter, I don't have my sheet, so I'm, oh, here it is.
I'm still going.
All right, okay, Peter votes yes. Jim?
Yeah.
Phil?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Hey, once I get everybody trained, that's it. You can't go off, you can't go off. All right, Joanne, what do we need to know about this?
So the applicant is proposing an above-ground pool with a 14 by 20 deck, unfortunately. This was the only location on their lot that was suitable, and it was close to the Winding Brook that goes through that area, so they needed to go through this process. Eric Mitchell has submitted a, an evaluation of the wetlands and found that it does not have a significant impact levels of functions and values of the stream. The applicant is also proposing to build a 14 by 20 deck, which would go around the pool. No waivers. The only comment that I received was from Conservation, which asked, that they voted to recommend with the condition that nothing else go into that outer 50, and that the water not be drained out of the pool towards the stream, and to leave the stump in place of the tree that's going to be removed. And that was it. So we're recommending approval with two conditions.
Tim.
Well, we have two numbers that don't line up on, on the application form, it says a 20-foot pool, and then the surveyed map by, um, John, um, by Mr. Mitchell shows an 18-foot diameter pool which touches the edge of the inner 50. So I think we need a clarification on the pool size.
The plan is mislabeled. You can even see how the, it's drawn correctly, see how it's a little bit better, bigger than the peystone patio? The peystone patio is 18, the pool is 20, that's, that was, uh.
So it's your.
Excuse me for a minute, you want to say your name for the record?
John Deceverie.
Thank you. He said it before to help me with the pronunciation, but we needed to know.
So it's, it's drawn correctly, it's, it's outside of the 50-foot buffer, but it's mislabeled as 18.
And he clarified that with Conservation, that it was just labeled wrong.
It was 20.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions from board members? Joanne, can you ask me, once, if work like this gets approved and performed, how do we check that, other than Mark doing a building permit, how do we check that this has actually been done and that the, the stump is still there?
Uh, Mark would do an inspection, not just putting up the pool, but they're building a deck, so there would have to be an inspection done once the footings are in place.
Can we have Mark inspect a stump?
Excuse me?
I, I'm wondering how we confirm that the stump is left? And I know why Conservation wants it left, so I'm just wondering how we confirm it. Tim?
So I would like to go beyond that. How do we know that the, uh, inner 50-foot line is going to be, um, followed? Is that going to be flagged by a wetland scientist, or how do we know where?
When it's flagged, and then I staked out the center of the pool. I work for Eric Mitchell, I staked it out with the toll station.
So you have the 50-foot inner line staked or flagged or marked in some way?
No, but I have the pool staked.
That's not my question. My question is, how do we know where the inner, where the line is for the inner 50 feet?
If someone needs to see it on the ground when they do an inspection, I could, I could stake it.
Like, I, I'm really, I'm not trying to insult you, but if it's your project and you're gonna stake it yourself, please.
I was under the impression that everything had to be inspected at the end anyways, so they were talking about that a little bit.
Our building inspector is not a surveyor, a licensed surveyor. He doesn't know where the lines are. He relies on a, a surveyor to place points for us or something. So I would like to insist that we have some sort of markings by Eric Mitchell or someone that actually locates that line, so that when you do construct your pool, you can clearly say, there's the line, I'm on my side of the line. That's my opinion, not a requirement.
Okay. Other board members? All right, I'm not hearing any, so at this time I'm gonna open the public hearing on this application. This application is map three, lot 16, it's 18 Winding Brook Road. This is in regards to the placement of a pool, um, and deck in the outer 50 of the wetland surface water conservation district overlay. Is there anybody present or on the phone who would like to speak in regards to this application? If so, press star nine if you're on the phone or if you're present and would like to say something. Come on down. Anybody pressing star nine?
Nope.
All right, there is no one present. At this time, I'm going to close the public hearing. Board members.
Barbara, I have a question.
Kimberly.
This is Kimberly. I, I forgot the name of the man who's there, from Eric Mitchell, but can you please confirm that the stream is not part of our prime wetland system?
I cannot confirm that. I just have, I have what you have as far as what Eric wrote up on it.
I'm pretty sure this is not prime.
I thought that.
Maybe Da, David, would you know? Is David still on?
Yeah.
David, do you know? Winding Brook?
Yes, what's the, what's the question?
Do you know whether what the Winding Brook over between Addison and Shirley Hill is a prime wetland?
I don't believe so.
I don't think it is.
Okay, thank you, I was just checking.
Okay, any other questions or comments? I, I don't, I don't question the applicant in regards to his representation, but I do think Tim has a good point in regards to placement, because we all know building projects begin, and they don't always end up quite as we planned. But I'm not quite sure how to resolve that issue. Anybody have any suggestions that might, if you have the same concern? Tim?
Mr. Mitchell conducted the wetlands evaluation and prepared the plan, and I would ask that Mr. Mitchell either perform this survey himself or certify that it was done correctly, and that way we'll have it on the record from Mr. Mitchell, who represents the applicant, that it was done correctly.
Anybody else have any comments or suggestions?
No, the line, the line for the, for the, where the inner 50 is, that line needs to be delineated, so that the pool will not encroach over that line. And if Mr. Mitchell will.
Can I ask for clarification on that? Are you saying that it be delineated on the plan or delineated in the field?
On the site, on the field.
Okay.
It's on the plan.
Mark the 50-foot wetlands buffer.
There's a line on there.
Okay, but let's, I, I don't have any issue with that, that there be a survey marking of the, of the boundary to ensure that the pool and the deck, I'm just, because it's all part of one, but that the pool does not encroach into the inner 50, that's all we're trying to avoid, and the applicant is represented, they are avoiding it. So when and how is that going to be checked, board members?
Well, Mr. Mitchell, if he does that work, there will be flags and stakes that the building inspector can look at.
He's not gonna be building the pool. I would suggest like.
I don't care who builds the pool.
Tim, the point is, anybody can move a stake, Eric Mitchell will not be certifying the as-built if you're concerned where the pool is going to be.
I'm not asking for an as-built, I'm asking for field staking of the location of the 50-foot line where the inner and outer separate.
I'm not trying to make a debate here, but I think the, the point Patty was raising was if there's a field survey that is not connected to construction, unless you're in a subdivision where you might be requiring as-bills, that is the issue.
I'm not, I'm not asking for an as-built. You know, when we do some of these other applications, like the Bogbrook proposal, which is coming up, we require that they place placards at the markers where the fifth, where the, where the wetland delineation is. So we need some physical, unless we're just gonna throw it, let it go and let him do what he wants. Have a nice day.
You can make that a condition.
Well, I was working on it until.
I'd shut it. Go ahead, who was on the line?
Peter.
Peter.
You know, the cus, the applicant is putting himself on the line if he puts it in the wrong spot, and it's an above-ground pool, um, I, I don't think that having somebody come in and doing surveys necessary. You know, it, it pits butt on the line, let's face it, if he puts it in the wrong spot, and Mark goes and looks at it and says, this is in the wrong spot, then he's gonna have to move it.
And how would Mark know that, Phil? Peter, how would Mark know that if there's no markers to go by?
Well, how long's Mark been doing this? I mean, he's a pretty smart guy.
Okay.
That's, Mark is not making any eyeball.
I surrender, I'm not bringing it up anymore.
Mark is not making an eyeball determination of where a wetlands buffer is, and he would absolutely refuse to. The applicant has had his hand raised, sir.
So I don't know if he wants the buffer staked for an inspector to see, or to keep me out of trouble, or both?
You're absolutely right on all counts.
The, the pool itself was staked, the center of the pool was staked, so it guarantees that it's out of the buffer. It's, it's in the spot that it is on the plan, so.
I'll go with that.
If an inspector needs to see it, if everybody really wants it, we could stake it, or the, the wet flags are still in.
Okay.
So whatever everybody wants.
Thank you.
The what are still in?
The wet flags.
Wetland delineation flags.
Oh, okay.
Which is what I was looking for.
All right, so why don't, well, you had mentioned flags earlier, but I wasn't sure what that meant. So leave, so you'll leave the flags in till there's an inspection? Okay.
I move that we grant the waiver with the conditions that was just represented by the applicant.
I'll second Jim's motion.
I'll second.
We're, we're approving the application, right? This is, or the, and the waiver from the relief, okay.
Right.
There's technically no waiver. All right.
Along with the conditions recommended by staff?
Right, and flags will be left until inspection. Was that Kimberly?
Yes, I'm sorry, I just wanted to interject before we vote, I'm not sure it matters, but I looked at the prime wetland map, and this is not part of the prime wetland system.
Okay, thank you. All right, was there a second to the motion?
I seconded it.
Tim seconded it. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'm gonna call for a vote, all those, state your preference, yes or no? David?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
I vote yes. Peter?
Yeah.
Jim?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, you're all set. You've got any questions about what we just did, call plans tomorrow.
Call me on Monday.
There are lots of people who have questions after we do things, so there you go. All right. The next item on our agenda tonight is a continuance request. This is map four, lot 87 six, completeness review time extension request for the approved subdivision site plan application of Woodland Trust, applicant and Placid Woods owner to subdivide the lot into two lots, and to build 74 townhouse-style units, family, multifamily, totaling 13 buildings. This was approved in September 2009. The applicant has one year from the date of approval to meet conditions of the approval in order for the plan to be signed and recorded. That timeframe obviously expired a number of times, so, so the applicant has come back many times before this and is back here again, asking for an additional time extension to meet the conditions of approval. The current approval is scheduled to expire this month, so the application was timely to request the continuance. The property is located at Bog Road. Joanne, is this complete? Has everything been submitted that would need to be received?
Yes.
Okay. Tim?
Joanne, have any, we had any zoning changes that would affect, uh, the request to have this extended?
No, not since last year. They're, they're requesting a one-year extension. I recommended a six-month extension because it really all has to do about, with financing and the timing of financing. I thought that would be a compromise. However, I'm not opposed to a one-year extension, if that's what's needed. I believe attorney, attorney Tierney is on the phone, as well as a representative from Dakota Partners.
All right, so is, is this ready for the planning board to review?
Yes.
Do we need to accept this?
It's basically just an extension, so I don't.
So you're not reg, okay, but I'm, I'm still gonna do a public hearing and listen to people, all right. It wasn't part of what I thought I was doing, but I'm starting to get late, so. Tim, what's your question?
Oh, Mr. Tr, Mr. Mc, Mr. Coughlin was a trustee.
Yeah, no, so, does anybody have any questions before I hear from the applicant? I'm not hearing anybody, I'm not seeing anybody, so, um, who's here for this application?
Yes, Michael Tierney for the Woodland Trust. As, as you heard, we're requesting a time extension of.
Attorney, Attorney Tierney, just hold on, I have that, that Mr. Coughlin might be calling in. Mr. Coughlin, are you on the line also?
He is not.
So apparently he is not. All right, Attorney Tierney, thank you, go ahead.
Sorry about that. So, uh, a, as I said, we are requesting a 12-month extension. There have been no changes in any regulations that would affect this project, um, and we're looking for the typical 12-month extension. While we won't, um, be able to hear from financing until November, um, we, we can't even in November, um, get started, and what we want to avoid is we want to avoid having to come back here in January, um, to ask for another six-month extension, and so a 12-month extension, as would typically, um, be done, would be more appropriate. I have Steve Kaminsky from Dakota Partners, um, here on the phone as well. He can explain more, um, about the financing, um, if you all want to hear about why the financing, um, comes in a couple different stages, and we wouldn't, uh, be able to actually go forward until the spring, um, and, um, that's really all I have.
And he's unmuted as well. You, you're on muted, Ms., I can't pronounce her.
Kaminsky.
Kaminsky.
Oh, hi, how you doing? Hi, my name's Steve Kaminsky, I'm from Dakota Partners. Dakota is a real estate development firm, we specialize in apartment development, condominium development. We do projects in New England, New York, um, Virginia, North Carolina, and Maryland. Been involved in this project since 2018, uh, having a little difficulty assembling the financing, uh, due to a number of reasons. We do a project in New Hampshire every other year. We've completed one in Milford, a similar project in Bedford, one under construction in Hudson, and, um, this project is, as you know, is in redevelopment. Money from this, for this project is coming mainly from New Hampshire Housing Finance Agency, we call it NEFA. They give out federal tax credits, and they also give out what we call soft secondary loans, money that, uh, the state, um, coughles together with the local, with the loan funds in HUD to, uh, fill gaps in financing. This project has, um, received federal tax credits, but, um, they apparently ran out of money before they got to this project, uh, to finance the whole thing. We tried a number of different ways to reconsider the project to make it work, and it all sealed, so it brings us back to having to reapply for that soft money again. In the interim, they've changed their priorities to favor a town like Goffstown, they've typically been giving most of it. They've typically been giving most of this money out. Most of these projects would go to Manchester, Concord, Nashua. In order to spread out the resources, they're looking for what they call high-opportunity towns, which are towns with higher incomes and better educational systems, which Goffstown fits that profile. So, the project is gonna be very competitive this round. We think it will be the highest-grade project, so we think this is a time where, you know, all this money will come together and we'll be able to break ground in the spring. In regard to the 12-month extension, that's absolutely necessary, I believe. Basically, this project involves HUD financing with federal funds. It comes with a lot of peculiar rules. One rule they have is once you apply HUD funds, which in this case would be September 30th, we cannot take what they call choice-limiting actions. That's basically, we cannot do anything. We can't sign contracts. We can't pull building permits. We can't begin construction until we undertake a HUD environmental clearance review, which is basically kind of like a MEEP review, which is Massachusetts, but we accumulate a lot of reports on environmental knowledge, floodplains, wetlands, cover it together, advertise it, general public comments on it, and then if everything comes back right, HUD releases as a no-finder. Takes anywhere from four to six months. So, presumably, we'll get financing in late November. We, New Hampshire Housing will then start that process. We will be, our hands will be tied. We won't be able, so typically, I just jump in and pull the building permit. I won't be allowed to do that until I get clearance from HUD, which I'm expecting to be either April, May, or June. So, that's why it's very important for us to have the 12-month extension, and that's about all I have.
Thank you. Any board members have any questions or comments?
Barbara, this is Jim. The usual reason for, a reason for having board extensions is so that we can change our regulations or our zoning and make the, be able to review these in light of the zoning or regulations. We can't change our zoning until the next town meeting, which, counted on my fingers, is more than six months from now. So, we're concerned about zoning changes. It doesn't do any good to move it back at six months, so a 12-month extension wouldn't make sense. I also don't, I don't think have any planning regulation changes that we're considering that would affect this property, and I don't mind not cluttering up our meeting agendas with these extension requests. We can avoid them. So, in this case, the year extension makes...
Sense. Anybody else from board members, board members before I open the public hearing? I'm not hearing or seeing anything, so at this time, I'm going to open the public hearing on this extension request for Bog Road and Mountain Road, map four, lot 87-6 and 87-6-1. This is Woodland Trust is the applicant. Placid Woods is the owner. The proposed developer is Dakota Partners. This is residential one. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak? If you are online, press star nine, and you will be unmuted. Patty, have you unmuted? If you've got some people?
Kathy Prezaka would like to speak.
Kathy, go ahead. Identify yourself for the record.
Hi, good afternoon, good evening, good night. How are you?
Good.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Wonderful. Thank you very much for hearing me. So, we've been listening to this up and for many years.
Kathy, tell us...
Going through his presentations and...
He won't stop.
Yes.
Kathy, tell us your last name for the record.
It's Prez Kaza, spelled P-E-A-T-P, R-Z, and Robert, Z-E, and zebra, E-K-A, Z-E, and zebra, A.
Thank you.
I'm a direct butter to the subject parcel.
Okay. Sorry about that. We know, I figured who it was, but I needed it for the record, so go ahead.
Sure. Yep, no problem. Okay, are you ready?
Yeah.
No? Okay. Thanks. So, this is a development that we have seen come through the planning board and the zoning board for many years. You may recall that the original application came to the planning board in September of 2009. That's 11 years ago, 11 years ago, and they have asked for repeated extensions and extensions through both the planning board and the ZBA. The ZBA, they were first granted approval for this project on February 2nd, 2010. So, that's 10 years. So, this applicant has required resources from the town and the butters and the department heads and all of the volunteer commissions to review these extensions and changes that they have made along the way for this past 11 years. I think that's excessive, and I'm wondering if there's a precedent that exists for any other project in Goffstown that the board has extended time extensions year after year after year for 11 years. And that's the first point. The second point is this project has morphed significantly from when it was first presented. It was presented as a condominium project, a project that was to be for first-time homeowners, allow people to live in their first home, for young folks to get started, and retirees to live in as a cost-affordable homeownership situation in a condominium. As evidenced by the application to the New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority, I've pulled that up, and what they've actually applied for is low-income housing tax credits, which is a federal program through the IRS that gives tax credits for low-income rental developments. So, this is not a condominium anymore. This is a low-income rental development. And as we look at the document that is public record, 2020 Low Income Housing Tax Credit Reservations, it shows Woodland Village Phase 1 in Goffstown that should have 42 units in Phase 1, and low-income units will be 31 of them. So, this is not a first-time homeowner situation anymore. These are apartments from everything that is available. Public record shows that this is a different animal than what was approved through the zoning board, and the zoning board looked at a multifamily that was higher density than was allowed. They had a special exception for the higher density and, what was the other thing? The multifamily in a single-family R1 district. So, that's why they had to get that zoning board approval. Now, it's morphed again. It's changed, and it's unfair for Oaks and us as the butters and townspeople to have to remember back 10 years, 11 years, eight years, what was the project, what was the proposal, what was the developer? He's come in every time. He comes with a different financing arrangement, with a different partner and a different scheme, and it's exhausting. Now, as I'm looking through the documents that were prepared for this evening's presentation that the applicant submitted, I see that he's calling it yet a condominium association, and he says that it's not next to a prime wetland when, in fact, I believe it is, and Kim, you can probably speak to that if you have that wetland map. I'm not sure. The north part of lot 87-6 is entirely wetland, so I'm not clear on whether it's considered prime or not, but you can help me out with that. I'm sure you know that. But continuing in good faith, this applicant had one year to pay $150,000 for the portion of the roundabout that was built in part because of his project. Now, how many years ago was that? 10 years ago, eight years ago? I'm not sure, but he was supposed to pay $150,000 towards that. He has not done that. He was supposed to file it with the registry of deeds. He has not done that because he hasn't met the other conditions of the application. And as I'm going through some more of these documents, I'm finding that they all, the planning board was conditional upon a zoning board approval. The zoning board approval was conditional upon a DES AOT permit, and as I'm going through these permits, it is curious that they actually had a lapse in their AOT permit of five months where they didn't have an AOT permit, and then they went back and they reapplied for their AOT permit. And I don't see in my files where they disclosed that to you, but I have a document from the DES that shows that it expired in 2016, expired February 19th, 2016, and wasn't reissued again until July 18th, 2016. So, in the absence of an effective AOT permit, then that made null and void the zoning approval and the planning board approval because they all piggyback on each other. So, he dropped the ball, and I just caught it in this juncture. So, I think that is one thing that makes, one of many things that make this a reason to not accept this extension, and I think if they want to go with all their approvals and do all of their reviews, and then we get an extension, if everything is according to HOIL, then give them the permit again if they have all the documents that they say they need. But from my standpoint, I see 11 years' worth of DES and AOT documents with a lapse in their permit. I see one of those DES documents was, had a variance as a primary component of it, and a waiver, I'm sorry, not a variance. It was a waiver based on proximity to the wetlands and the water table depth. And so, what that meant was that they had to foreshorten a riprap approach to the wetlands because they were so close to the wetlands because of their increased density. Now, in these 11 years, what has happened? Upland, we have had houses on Lesnick Road, three houses on Lesnick Road, a four-lot subdivision on Checkerberry Lane that have affected drainage principally that is included in the drainage report for this subject property. This is where one of the main drainages off Mount on Knunik comes down and through these properties. And there is a house on Checkerberry Lane who, in addition to all of the construction, had to have a new drainage swale dug in there because of the change in all of the drainage that has happened because of construction of those, right now, there's five houses built. So, the drainage has changed, the lines have changed, enough has changed to make the drainage plan materially different. So, I don't have to engineer it. I just need to present to you that there is a material difference between what this approval was based on, and it was based on proximity to the water table and the drainage, less than one inch. It was less than one inch on a 67-acre property, I don't know the exact number of acres, but offhand, but on this whole acreage of property, it was less than an inch in depth to the water table, and that's a significant issue. So, other outstanding issues, was addressed earlier, is our sewer capacity, is our water capacity. It's been 10 years' worth of development. I don't know whether there's sewer capacity or water capacity. I know the drainage has changed, and I would suspect that with these new houses, traffic has changed as well. So, all of those considerations are significant, and I would encourage you to significantly and seriously consider not giving this extension and let them do what they need to do in terms of their, you know, their documentation. They had it previously approved. If everything meets all those environmental reviews and HUD reviews, then have them come back and we'll review it again. But right now, there is significant considerations about this in my mind. One other thing that I see is on the sales brochure for this, it's also substantiated by the real estate listing. It says that they have already subdivided it, that they're selling 37 acres fully permitted for 78 townhouses, and that it's right in the sales document says that they can be rented for income, and it's up to you. You don't have to have owner occupied. You don't have to have them as condominiums. They can be leased at your will to maximize your income, and that's different, substantially different than what we were told in the planning board as a butters, and changing the character of the neighborhood as it relates to the zoning board, special exception that they needed to have with changing to the neighborhood, and the experience here is very different. A low-income apartment is very different than single-family ownership of condominiums, and we're concerned about that, and the bait and switch that continues to happen with this client, with this applicant is unnerving. He hasn't paid his application, I mean, not his application, but his $150,000, and he's drug his feet for 11 years, 11 years, and through no fault of mine, through no fault of any of you folks, the hard-working folks that show up month after month, meeting after meeting after meeting, please just say no to him. Let him get his ducks in a row, and when he has his ducks in a row, have him come back and review everything. And then, one more, and probably the most important thing, is in his application, if you look at the drawings, back in the depth of it after the butter list, he has a layout. And in the layout, it's a map, it's a site plan, and it talks about Phase 1, Phase 2, Phase 1 and Phase 2, and there's a match line to sheet G1. There are subsurface retainage and filtering system. It's shown on the right-hand side. In the approved layout that you guys approved back in the beginning, there were three on this lot, and there was one, if you look at this as a clock, it's perhaps at 3:00. The other one was at perhaps 4:30, and then the third one, the one that was so close to the wetland, was up at like 11:00, and it shows where it says match to sheet G1, that's where that was located on sheet G1. But sheet G1 isn't even on your documents, any, in this whole packet that he submitted. So, he's showing the one on G1 is not included in any way, shape, or form on this document, and then where the buildings are on where it says Phase 1, Arbor Row, there was a whole giant subsurface area between those two corners that come in at the corner, and that has been removed. That, again, is a material difference related to conservation and wetland protection that was significant in both the planning board and the zoning board conversations. So, based on these changes that he's baiting and switching back and forth again, there's significant reason and material difference to just not rubber stamp this, and I'll rest on that.
Thank you, Kathy. Is there anybody else who would like to make a comment on this? Do you have anybody, Patty?
Nope.
Wait a minute, let me go down.
Yep.
Barbara, if I could just say two things... Barbara, if I could just say two things or three things.
All right. Hold on, let me just make sure there's nobody showing up. I'm going to close the public hearing. No more votes.
Okay.
All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. Joanne.
I just wanted to remind the board that this plan was amended, I believe it was about two years ago when Dakota Partners came into the picture. The buildings changed somewhat, and there were a few other minor changes. One of those changes was to change the ownership from a condominium form to one owner, and it was revealed that these would be rental units. And part of that application did provide information regarding the low-income portion of it, which the board has no authority over. And that's something the board doesn't get involved with. And the plan, just to remind you, the plan was approved with conditions, and those conditions have... You know, they're working on them, some have been met, not all have... Plans are not yet signed, which is no different from any other application that comes through our office.
Anybody else? Attorney Tierney, did you want to say anything before we finish up our deliberations?
I think it's understood, as you heard from Ms. Duffy, that there was an amendment a couple of years ago, and that there are no changes between what was approved as an extension in 2019 and what we're asking you to extend here today. So, there's no changes from the last time you saw this.
Anybody else?
Hi, this is Kimberly.
Kimberly.
I just have to say that I think that this seems to have stretched out quite a bit, and I wouldn't be in favor of supporting this. I just agree with everything that Kathy has said, and it seems like the applicant has had so many opportunities to get their act together and get this one done, and it just seems to drag on, and there's always a reason, and there's always a reason. And I just don't feel like... I feel like every time they come in, we have a discussion about, well, this will be the last extension, and the reasons why they're asking for another extension. And I just, I don't agree. I feel like they've had enough time to get this done, and I wouldn't support this.
Anybody else?
I'm not going to support it. I wasn't here last year for the vote. I don't think I supported it the year before, so I don't think any of this is a surprise to the applicant. There have been enough changes. I understand some things that the butters raised are not in our jurisdiction, but I also think the reality is this plan has not been recorded because it would require the payment of the fee that was associated with the roundabout, and we have since then, this project would have been subject to impact fees. There's a reason this application keeps getting extended, extended, and I actually think that's it. But I understand the applicant's position, but I do think there have been enough changes over the years. I also find it interesting, and I think it's unfortunate, that we did not clutch that the AOT permit had expired. So, I think it was...
Barbara, if I could just add that...
Was it a clutch? Yeah. I think it was...
My records show that the AOT permit is valid and has been extended. Jim Coughlin did provide me with the paperwork.
No, I understand that. I think Kathy, the butters' point was that at one point, it had actually expired. It was not continued. And given that, that is a failure to keep the conditions and the plan at that point, her position was, is no longer valid, because the condition was no longer met, so you couldn't have continued it. I think that was her point.
I'm not sure when that happened, but I'm not aware of that happening in the last few years.
I remember him at one point talking about he was working on extending his AOT permit.
I suspect Kathy had her paperwork correct. All right, any further discussion on this? Do I have a motion? I have a motion to approve? Is that correct, Gil? I don't think I do have a motion.
No one's made a motion.
Oh, I thought Jim had made the motion, but that was last year. Okay. Is there a motion on this request for a one-year extension?
I'll make a motion to grant...
I make a motion to deny the request.
Kimberly's made a motion to deny. Is there a second? I'll second it. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. David?
No.
Tim?
No.
I vote yes. Peter?
No.
Jim?
No.
Bill?
No.
Kimberly? I think that was probably a yes. Yes, okay, I thought it... Is there another motion? Tim?
Make a motion to grant the 12-month request.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
That's seconded by Peter. Going to call for a vote. David?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
I vote no. Peter?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Kimberly?
No.
The request is granted. The vote, two opposed. The next item on our agenda is a completeness review, final review hearing for a proposed lot-line adjustment. This is Map 17, lots 57 and 58. This is down on Two Morrow Street. Diane Sullivan is the owner. It is zoned R2. Joanne, is this application complete?
Yes, it is, and there is no regional impact.
Make a motion to find that this application is complete and ready for review, and there's no regional impact.
Is there...
Seconded.
And there is a waiver, is it requested? Is that motion...
I'll include to grant a waiver, discussion purposes only.
Peter, are you all set with that?
Yes, I'm good with that.
All right, I'm going to call for the roll. David?
Yes.
Yes.
I vote yes. Peter?
Yes. You called me yes, but you're kind of breaking up.
Jim?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Okay. Joanne?
Okay, so they're coming in for a lot-line adjustment because Lot 57 would like to add on an accessory apartment in the rear of the house where you currently see the propane tank in that area. So, they needed more space on that side in order to do that. So, the configuration of the... So, I'm sorry, so the transfer of parcel A and parcel B is the exact amount, which is 1,635 square feet. So, one lot will give that amount, and the other lot will receive that amount. It's a very strange configuration, and the reason for that is because they needed to give the parcel that was on septic a little bit more land so that they met the lot requirement size for that lot. So, that's kind of where we're at now. I believe the Volkmans are on the phone, and they can explain exactly what they're planning to do.
We have one of them here and one of them on the phone.
Who are the Volkmans?
They're the applicant.
No, the applicant are the more...
They're the applicant, the owners are the applicant that's presenting. They're listed as the applicant Volkman. They're not the owners.
It says it's a developer's name on this application.
That's great.
The owner is the Seminoles.
Yeah, but they're...
Okay.
Developer. They're the developer.
Joanne, can you address the wetland delineation waiver request?
Yes, so they're asking for a waiver of the wetlands. The two lots are existing with structures on both lots, and they're in Pinnardville. I don't believe there are wetlands on the site, but you'd have to confirm that with Mr. Volkman or the Volkman.
Okay. All right, any other questions? Sarah, you're on the line. Do you... Does DPW... Because I'm going to let you go if you don't have any issues with this subdivision, or do you?
Lot-line adjustment.
I do not.
A lot-line adjustment, sorry. All right, so...
I do not.
All right, so DPW does not have any issues with this. So, Sarah, thank you very much. I'll let you go.
Thank you very much. Have a good night, everyone.
All right.
Good night.
Good night.
Bye, Sarah.
Bye, Sarah. So, Mr. Volkman, you're here to present. Why don't you come on down? Thanks. And you want to just give us your name first for the record?
Paul Volkman.
Okay. All right, why don't you explain to us what you're doing?
Basically, this foundation, Number 4 Morrow, which is 1757, this foundation and garage was probably poured in 1990, and it did not... It was poured in a bad place. So, the lot does not conform to any of your setback regulations. So, 13 years ago, they proposed an addition on this site. It was reviewed by ZBA, and they approved it with unconforming, you know, lot line. So, I was approached to possibly put an addition on the back of this property. And I said, where you want to put this addition doesn't work for a house like this. Why don't we put it behind the garage? And they said, well, you know, our lot line is, you know, really tight and all that. So, we approached the neighbor who's a relative, and we've made the swap to basically make a conforming lot line for this property. So, we hired Fieldstone Engineering, and they came in and they surveyed both lots and said, a good swap here to keep the $20,000-plus needed for 1758. They said, a good swap is just, we'll just swap a little land back and forth, we'll redirect the lines here, and we'll have plenty of setback for any proposed projects coming forward.
Questions from board members?
So, 1757 is the large diagram, and that's the parcel you're talking about doing an addition onto?
Correct.
Where the propane tank is. All right, can I... Mr. Volkman, I have a question. Why are we leaving this odd little strip that's going up to 1863? Is that...
When I was first presented this project, I was told there was a town well and town sewer. Partway into the project, I was told the house at the end of the street, which is 1758, was not ever switched over to the sewer. When the owners, back when, 15, 20, 30 years ago, offered sewer hookup, they refused. So, I found out that's on septic. We need to maintain the 20,000-square-foot lot on each piece of property. So, Fieldstone came out with their magic pen, you know, and they surveyed it and said, if we just leave a little strip right here, everybody's fine with the 20,000 and the 20,000. So, it was 20,000-plus on each lot.
So, what does that have to do with sewer?
We needed to maintain 20,000 on Lot 1758.
Oh, because they don't have sewer?
There's a septic there, yeah.
Okay.
So, and they're related, and so it was... There was no issues with doing this. So, we're going to file the deed and then proceed with ZBA for an addition or ADU.
Okay. Thank you. Questions from board members? And I apologize, Mr. Volkman, did you address the waiver? I apologize.
So, the waiver, basically, I think, between the condominiums and between, I guess, the Hannaford Lot or maybe the old Shaw's Lot, I think it's the Hannaford Lot, and Watoy, there's drainage, I think, that comes off of those parking lots, and maybe filters its way down into the swamps back behind there. But there's probably 15 or 20 feet of delineation between their yard and down into this gully. So, the waiver was basically saying, well, if there seems, as if, on your GIS map, if there seems to be wetland there, it's kind of really not, you know? It shows it, but there's no way to see that it's there because the land drops off 15, 20 feet. So, I think it's a gully that probably picks up a little stormwater, but it's at the very back of 1757. The other thing the town did back in the day was put a drainage pipe at the street, and it runs across these two pieces of property down into that drainage area. So, the town already uses that area for drainage. We're not interrupting any pipes. We're not interrupting any drainage, any sewage, you know, anything like that. So, we've stayed clear of putting this lot line over the drainpipe that's underground. DPW signed off on it. We called all the departments, and everyone seems fine.
Okay. Tim?
So, what is the purpose of the lot-line adjustment request? What are you hoping to accomplish?
So, we want a legal setback for an addition at the back of that garage.
I see. So, you maintain that 15-foot or whatever that number is?
Yeah, we're going like 15, 6.
Just make it.
15, 6?
I believe so.
And I guess we don't have any say on what you're doing.
Yeah, before... And just for history, in 2007, ZBA approved an addition on the back of this house with nine-foot setbacks and six-foot setback, like the way it is now. I couldn't put a... I wouldn't go build a room on the back of someone's kitchen dining room unless they were going to live in it. So, the slam dunk for me was, why don't we just move it over here? It's out of the way of the entire ranch, the rest of the house. I couldn't build this room on the back of that house, not the way it was drawn 13 years ago.
All right. Anybody else from the board have any questions for the applicant? Do you believe that not doing the wetlands will not affect the purpose and intent of the development regulations? And you've submitted a waiver request that says that?
Am I supposed to say correct? I need Fieldstone for that question.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Correct.
All right. Board members, if I don't hear anything, I'm going to open the public hearing.
Well, I just should let you know that you signed the waiver request unless they forged your signature on the bottom of it.
Don't.
They sent everything.
Yeah, just so you know. You said you want to give it to Fieldstone, but there's your name right there.
Well, Carl's at the beach.
All right, okay.
My son's in Amherst.
All right, at this time, I'm going to open the public hearing on Map 17, lots 57 and 58. I want to make sure this gentleman can have his business addressed. He's been sitting here very patiently all night. Is there any member of the public here who would like to make a comment on this application, which is a lot-line adjustment, Map 17, lots 57 and 58? Patty, is there anybody online hitting star 9 that would like to participate?
I have them muted. Both, there is one owner, and Andrew Volkman is online, but they have not hit star 9 yet. I've not seen any flags.
They're still awake.
They're still there.
All right, I'm not... We're not getting any indication that anybody from the public wants to say anything in regards to this application, so at this time, I'm going to close the public hearing. Board members, do you have any other comments?
Need some information for the applicant? If I may?
Go ahead.
It states the proposed use of the property is to construct an in-law apartment.
Correct.
And you're going to be on the town sewer.
Correct.
You know about accessibility fees and other things, correct?
Oh, I've spoken...
No, don't... Oh, this has been a big problem.
No, I've spoken with the powers that be. I know all the...
You know, you have to pay an accessibility fee to build an in-law apartment.
Yes.
And pay increased flowage.
Yes.
Good, thank you. That's all, I make sure you understood.
We've spoke to each of the departments.
Yeah, and impact fees. We've been talked to about the impact fees as well.
Well, I'm just making sure.
He just wants to do sewer.
I was a little shocked, but we've built it into the budget.
All right.
Thank you.
So, Joanne, do you understand at this point the suggested conditions for approval that you've recommended address... that you've recommended address everything that has come up in this matter?
Yeah.
Okay. So, the first item that the board needs to address is the waiver request. The waiver request is in regards to the wetlands delineation on this lot, which is section-
3A 30.
So, I'll make a motion to grant the requested waiver of section 3, colon, A, dot, 30 for wetlands delineation, based on the statements by the builder, Paul Volkman, that they will not have any practical difficulty and may cause any problems.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Is there any further discussion on the waiver request? Seeing none, I'm going to call for the vote. David?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
I vote yes. Peter?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
The waiver has been granted, the next item-
Make a motion to approve the application for the lot-line adjustment on Lot 1757 with Lot 1758, with conditions number 1 through 14 as proposed by staff.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
I'll second it.
Phil got in there, Phil seconded it. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'm going, Patty?
I think payment of impact fees should be added, I'm only seeing the sewer accessibility fees and part of the building for-
Okay, I'd like to add number 15, that impact fees will be assessed to the project.
Could I just say something? This project is only for lot-line adjustments.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, there's no impact fees for that.
That's the way, why 14 was placed.
He will need to pay them after-
He knows what he's doing, but, yeah.
Never mind, our motion stands.
Sorry, Joanne. Motion stands, is there any further discussion? Thank you, Patty, though, for pointing that out. All right, I'm going to call for a vote. David?
Yes.
Yes.
I vote yes. Peter?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Thank you, you're all set.
Thank you, Mr. Volkman, for your patience.
And Tim, just so you know, that didn't technically qualify as a roll call.
I was just jumping the gun.
All right. Joanne, is there any other business that this board needs to address tonight?
Memo here from the 10-year plan, or are you going to skip it?
I don't have anything.
I don't think we need to do anything.
You have a very good engineer.
Motion to adjourn.
It'd be nice if we had that request for that signalized controlled intersection.
Hold on, David, are you, David Pierce, so we have a 10-year plan, do you have anything that you wanted to address in regards to the 10-year plan?
No, I don't.
Okay, all right, so Phil has moved to adjourn, I don't even know if he did, but he always does, so I'm assuming he did. All right, is there a second?
And I seconded it.
All right, well, there you go, freaking frack, my adjourned boys. All right, any further-
What the hell's that mean?
Be careful.
All right, David?
It's that time of night, that's what it means.
David?
Yeah.
I'd rather wait till 11, but for the convenience of the rest of the board, I'll vote yes.
Tim?
David, you could stay, you could stay.
Tim?
Yes.
I vote-
I'm going to see you, bye.
Peter? Yeah, Jim, Phil, Kimberly, good night, everybody.
Yes.
All right.
Kimberly says yes.
Thank you, everybody, bye.
Okay, take care, good night.